All right, welcome everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. I guess we're getting a taste of what fall weather is going to be. So appreciate your battle on the rain if it's still raining out there. I know we've been back here since 6:00. So we're going to call the October 23rd, 2017 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to start with an invocation given by Commissioner Marley, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
As we gather here this evening, the people who have been called upon to lead the community in which we all live and work and play, and as representatives of all of the residents of our community, we are grateful for and ever mindful of the opportunities before us to render our service to our fellow citizens and to our city. May we as leaders be given the wisdom to not ask first, "How do we fix this?", but instead, "What do we need to learn?", "How might we need to change?", and "To whom do we need to listen?". May we keep in mind, because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes for political debate today, that we are not only leaders but also servants, and that it is our responsibility to serve the common good for all. May we remember that, no matter where we live in our fine city, everyone, gay, straight, transgender, black or white, Hispanic or Asian, Muslim, Jew, Hindu, Sikh or atheist, is our neighbor, our sibling, and that throughout the ages prophets have called upon the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least of those among us, our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, or spirit, the strangers and immigrants in our midst, and those who live on the margins, those who are alone, those who are forgotten. May we be granted the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of optimism, by the spirit of justice, by the spirit of hope, and by the spirit of love. This we hope for in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good and right and true. So say we all.
My Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that brings us to item number four on our agenda, Senator Nolenberg's legislative updates. Senator Nolenberg, welcome.
Thank you very much. It's a little wet outside, so trying to get in without being too wet here. First of all, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak again, and I try to get out here at least once a year, and I appreciate the opportunity to give you a legislative update. Unlike what's happening at the federal level, we actually get a lot of things done at the state level, and so I'm going to highlight some of those items here for you today. I'll start, talk a little bit about the budget. I'll talk a little bit about the Stormwater Utility Act, and then finally I'll talk about this opiate crisis that we have in our state, our county, and our city. So first, the budget is now complete. It's $10.2 billion. The overall budget is $54 billion. It is ahead of schedule for the seventh year in a row. As you know, your budgets begin in July. Our budget doesn't begin until October 1st, and so we've been able to get a budget done back in June, which I think gives you the sense of certainty that you need to plan for your budgets, no different than if you own a business or you own household, you want to know how much money you're taking in every month, you want to know what your expenses are every month, and so we try to provide that sense of certainty by providing a budget done back in June for you. So I think that's critical. Like I said, seven years in a row. Public safety was a big priority. We funded 150 new troopers. We also put some funding in cybercrime. We know that that's an epidemic as well, and a lot of people are being victimized through cybercrime, and so there's some additional money for that. Skilled trades has been a big priority of the legislature. We know that not everybody wants to or has the means to go to college, but they can still earn a great living in the skilled trades arena, and so that's a priority in the budget. I should add that out of that $10.2 billion, out of that $54 billion budget, people always ask me, "Why is that so high? Why has that grown when the state portion, the $10.2 billion general fund, has not?" And it's really not grown since 2007. That's the part that we control. The other part that includes federal money and grant money has grown, and the question I get asked is why? And the simple answer is, when the federal government comes to us and says, "If you give us a dollar, we'll give you two or three back", we think that's a pretty good deal for the state of Michigan taxpayers to leverage the dollar that we have to capture, two or three dollars, or whatever that percentage in return is. And so that part has gone up, but the portion that the state has had has not really gone up in about 10 years. And so I just want to highlight that. I think we're doing a lot with what we currently have. We don't have, it's not growing crazy, unfortunately it's not growing, but I think the economy is improving, and hopefully it will continue to improve. School aid was a revenue sharing, up $18.8 million. The Royal Oak portion will go up 2%, so above the rate of inflation. So that's, we're trying to get there, try to help our locals do what they need to do, fire, police, protection, obviously, infrastructure, so a big priority there. Roads are up $231 million in this current budget. $130 million of it will go towards local roads, and then also $35 million for pipes. This is the stuff below the roads, the infrastructure. You know, it's not very sexy to talk about infrastructure, but it's actually, with our aging infrastructure that we have, it's a problem. I mean, we know about the floodings in Flint, and the water in Flint, and the situation out in Frazier. We need to pay more attention to what's below the surface, and so that's been a priority in this budget, $35 million for that. School aid is up $415 million. Total budget is $14.6 billion. It's up $2 billion since 2011. We also increased the funding for at-risk students, something that Royal Oak was not getting, and in fact, most of my Senate communities were not getting. We were able to increase the funding for that, and so that's a big win to all of our school districts that I represent. Higher Ed went up 10%. So again, great budget, great priorities in this budget, police, fire, education, I think are the three. Infrastructure are the four different themes that you see in the budget that was passed back in June. I want to talk a little bit about the Stormwater Utility Act. And as you know, I sponsored legislation on the I-75 bill that would eliminate the local match for our local communities. And that was brought to my attention by Michigan Municipal League and STEMCOG, and so they came to my attention on the Stormwater Utility Act. And I appreciate the partnership I have with them, because without having partnership with the local communities, you know, I wouldn't know what your problems are. And so they identified a problem to me, and I know I talked to the city manager a little bit about this, and essentially it's to protect the private property from flood damage and to keep our water safe. I think we can all agree to that. There was a Supreme Court ruling several years ago, and what we simply want to do is codify the law so that it will allow local units to adopt a fee concept, if you will, as opposed to an ad valorem tax. So basically, if you're paying for a service, you should pay for that service that you use. In other words, if you want to run your air conditioning all the way and run your DTE bill up, you should pay for what you use. And so the idea of a utility fee structure makes more sense than an ad valorem situation. And the problem has been is that it hasn't been codified in law, and the Supreme Court decision, the Supreme Court did make a decision, and we want to codify that, and what we're seeing are a number of lawsuits. I know Royal Oak has faced one. It's been, we got one, but they could still appeal. So we, you know, we're hoping that this will take care of that problem against some of these favorable lawsuits. I know Birmingham lost in a big way, that's another one of my communities. So we're hoping to get this thing passed pretty soon. The bill is in draft form, so I expect that we'll be dropping it hopefully by Thanksgiving or Christmas, and probably won't have hearings until then, but it's coming. And then the opiate epidemic, it's, you know, I've been approached by a number of families that have come to me with, I had a Birmingham mother that came to my office, and, you know, she's a professional woman, her husband's a professional as well, and her 17-year-old daughter was addicted to opiates, and she is currently in jail. And so we hear these stories all the time, and it's not really just an urban problem, it's a suburban issue and also a rural issue. There's not one community in the state of Michigan that's not affected through this opiate epidemic. There's a series of bills, so we're trying to highlight the importance of addressing this issue. I'll highlight my bill, I'm most familiar with that one. Essentially, what my bill would do, it would eliminate, it would prohibit a physician from prescribing a pain medication for acute more than seven days. So I want to make that clear, because if you have a chronic pain issue, we're not limiting that, but acute, you go in for a root canal or an outpatient surgery for a shoulder injury or knee injury, what we're saying is the physician should not prescribe more than seven days. And what's happening is, there's a lot of extra medications that are sitting in a cabinet, and it gets in the hands of the wrong people, so we want to limit what's available out there. And secondly, you know, a lot of people are becoming addicted, and so if we can kind of better manage that, lessen the number of pills that are out there, it should minimize the addiction that we're seeing. So it's, it passed the Senate, the House, it's at the governor's desk right now. There's another bill, Senator Schutmaker sponsored that one, that would improve the map system that we have, that the physicians have to go to the map system to, basically it's a database of all prescriptions that are filled, and so before a physician can prescribe, they have to check the system to see if this patient isn't, you know, applying, or trying to get prescriptions from three or four or five different doctors. And so that's a system that is being put in place as well. So we're trying to address it. This is not the silver bullet, it's a start, and so I think it's a great start. And so I'll just conclude by thanking you for having me up here, and I enjoy the partnership that we have with the community, and I'm only as good as you want me to be. If you want me to help you, I'm willing to help. If you don't want my help, that's okay too, but I'd like the help. And so I highlight the I-75 bill and the Stormwater Act, because obviously they both affect your local communities, and so I think if you had a good relationship, I've had a good relationship with them, and hopefully we can continue that. Happy to take any questions. I think I used up-
Do we have any questions for Senator Nolenberg? Commissioner Marley?
Senator, thanks for coming out. I appreciate the updates. This might be going back a little bit, a few months anyway, but can you talk about Senate bills 242, 243, 244? The economic development incentives?
I'm not familiar with those.
The Foxconn bills?
Right, which ones?
The Foxconn, Good Jobs bills.
Okay. It's a great bill, I voted for him. I mean, it's anything we can do to spur, if you want to create jobs, you know, you have to have development, and you have to make it attractive for companies that want to come to Michigan. And we live in a global environment, we're competing with other states, and so any tool that we can put in the toolbox to create jobs in Michigan, you know, I'm all for. So it was a bipartisan bill, and so I'm part of that package in supporting it.
It looked like it passed the Senate 32 to 5.
Pardon me?
It looked like it passed the Senate 32 to 5.
There you go. Yeah.
Good, economic development incentives. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Senator Nolenberg? I'll just add, thanks again for coming out, updating us on those important issues with the budget. Of course, Stormwater is near and dear to our heart, and I know we've been talking and working with different entities down here, and I know your office is always open, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item number five this evening, public comment. I'll just read kind of our governing rules here with public comment. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on city-related issues, both on the agenda and not. I ask that comments be directed to the Commission as a whole, but not to individual commissioners. This will be the only time tonight to address the City Commission on agenda items, unless you're here for the one public hearing we have related to in-season café. So if you're here to speak about that tonight, when we get to that agenda item, I'll open up the public hearing, and you'll have an opportunity to speak on that topic then. So if you're here to speak about in-season, if you can wait till the public hearing versus public comment, that would be great. If you wish to speak tonight at any time, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor, to come up to the podium. We're going to need your name and address for the record, and be mindful that the City Commission does want to hear from everybody who wishes to speak tonight, so comments are limited to five minutes or less, and there's a timer at the podium to help keep track of your time. If you don't want to speak tonight, don't hesitate to reach out to us at any time. We get lots of emails, telephone calls, things like that throughout the week, so if the public forum is not your way of communicating, and you want more personal dialogue, feel free to reach out to us in other ways. And note that the City Commission doesn't respond directly to questions during public comment, however, we are taking notes and will address the questions when the agenda topic is discussed. So when the item comes up, if you're here to add comments and input on the snow ordinance, we're taking notes, we'll talk about it when we get to the snow ordinance and make sure your questions are heard. Or we'll refer to the proper city department if the subject matter isn't on the agenda item. And our assistant city manager, Mr. Krison, will be taking copious notes tonight on these things, and often they will follow up on a number of the issues, and follow up on the matters as needed. So with that, we'll open it up. Who's first tonight? Yes?
Hello, my name's Carol Lau, spelled L-A-U. My husband and I have owned 923 Knowles for going on three decades now, and I'm here to bring up an old concern, yet it's still a concern, and that is the truck route in the southern part of Knowles. Our house is right where the trucks turn, it's right at the corner of Knowles and Hudson. And so my concern is the property values. I don't have any proof, but I suppose that if a house, if our house was for sale and another house with comparable square footage and the same number of bedrooms was for sale, just a block or two away, that they would probably appraise for the same price or close to the same price. But in reality, if somebody had a choice between living a block or two away or living on Knowles where they see the trucks and smell the trucks and hear the noise, they're not going to buy the house on Knowles. So that's pretty much my concern. Royal Oak is a very charming city. It becomes more charming every year, every month, every day. But yet, when you sit on the front porch of my house, you're looking at an industrial area. I suppose that it's called a residential street, but you're looking at an industrial area. And so I would be very happy if you reconsidered the decision that was made, I think, two years ago regarding the fact that the southern part of Knowles is a truck route. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lau. Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Fred Kaiser, that's K-A-I-S-E-R. I live at 927 North Washington. Just wanted to make a couple of comments relative to item number nine that you'll be considering this evening with regard to the traffic safety recommendations. I was afforded the opportunity to participate at a couple of the subcommittee meetings for bicycle and pedestrian safety, and then again at the traffic committee meetings, and I was even afforded the opportunity to participate in the Training Wheels session. Judy David was kind enough as your community engagement specialist to invite me to be part of that. I just want to compliment all those that are concerned with regard to the professionalism and the courtesy with which public comment and input was solicited. I had some initial concerns. I believe those concerns with regard to parking retention have been mitigated, and I am for the proposal as I believe it will be submitted to you this evening for action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Carrie Smith. I reside at 1020 Vincetta. I've lived there for about 15 months, and I am here for agenda item number nine, and I'd like to hand these photos over for you guys to take a look. Thank you. So I actually started the petition to have permit parking on Vincetta, and it was decided by the engineering team that it would be from Woodward Avenue until Lawndale, and I'd like to invite the neighbors on the block who've signed the petition to please stand and show your support. So thank you for coming tonight. It's become a hardship on our street. One of the most sought-after boulevards in Oakland County, Vincetta, to live on, has become a hardship because of the parking that's taking place with the commercial building on the left and Cruz and Mere Restaurant on the opposite side of the boulevard. The issues that come from the parking situation are obstructed views when you're pulling out of your drive. My house happens to be the very last ranch next to the commercial building across from Cruz. Dr. Manzo in the audience has a young daughter who is 16, a new driver, and she pulls out right next to me during the obstruction. I have a two-and-a-half-year-old daughter who is hard to see with all the cars coming down at high speeds right off of Woodward Avenue and blocked by the cars. And then my neighbor, Ben Dorr, has two children, one being Jace that he is with, they live across the boulevard at 1017. In addition to that, a concern would be leaf and snow removal, garbage pickup, UPS, FedEx deliveries, anyone on the boulevard who takes pride in their home and has lawn service, maintenance, or people coming to their home have nowhere to park their vehicles. Fire hydrants are being blocked on one of the homes on the opposite side of the boulevard on a nightly manner. In addition to that, driveways are being blocked by people's vehicles actually rolling over the skirt of your drive, and that's where I would like to make mention my concern for my neighbor across the street at 1017, Jace, here in the front row, and I'd like to turn the microphone over to his dad, Ben Dorr, at 1017 Vincetta. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. All right. Sure, you can follow. Sounds very coordinated, the only hand up.
I'll try to keep this brief and not too redundant. Thank you all on the commission for the forum to discuss this. About a year and a half ago, my wife and I set out to find a new house when it became apparent that our newly remodeled two-story house on the main street end of Vincetta just wasn't any longer going to be practical for our son, Jace. We were really excited when we found Open Concept Ranch at the other end of the street. It was a street that we really come to love, and it appeared that it was going to work out perfectly. So that spring, we bought the house, we pulled all the permits, began tailoring the house to our new lifestyle. We added in addition to accommodate our growing family, added ramps, other accessible features to accommodate our son, all with the cooperation of our neighbors who dealt with construction, you know, pretty much throughout the summer. Earlier this summer, though, it was our turn to deal with that construction noise when the restaurant next door was being remodeled. We, at the time, had put up our privacy fence to keep our pets and our boys contained, never had any issues with prior restaurant owners, so we really didn't think a whole lot of it beyond that. Since then, though, unfortunately, it's become a constant logjam of parked cars lining both sides of the street from about 8:00 AM in the morning to the middle of the night. We've come home to find people standing in our driveway after dark, cars in front of our driveway. We've seen the same for our neighbors pretty consistently all the way down to Lawndale. Some nights, when it's particularly nice out, date nights and so on, it can reach as far down as Fair Lawn in Mayfield. You know, it's really ruining the character of the neighborhood, and, you know, I feel like our street is becoming an extension of the alley behind the restaurant. The street is not as clean as it used to be and well-kept, it's being littered with takeout debris. There's actually been parking stalls spray-painted on the curb up and down the street. But, you know, if this were only a nuisance, we probably all wouldn't be here today, we wouldn't have asked for the motion or supported it this far. It has raised new safety concerns on our street. We've always had an issue on Vincetta with the blind turn off of northbound Woodward, there's a bit of a bottleneck there. There is a office that is in between Catalpa and Woodward where some of the office workers were parking along the street, where, and nobody seems to be able to figure, the northbound lane on Woodward makes a turn onto Vincetta, and with the parking there, bottleneck's down so hard that it just really raises safety concerns on that side of the street. That was one thing. So now we've got people parking up and down both sides of the street from, again, 8:00 AM until after midnight, blocking driveways, fire hydrants, making it very hard to see pedestrians, bikers, joggers, children, something that I think really adds a lot of character to our street. As my neighbor mentioned, you know, it is a very sought-after street, and we're, you know, very pleased that people like to come and experience it, pedestrians and bikers, particularly joggers. As she mentioned, my son, Jace, four years old, we've got a two-year-old, she's got a two-and-a-half-year-old, so there are a lot of children in the area dealing with this parking situation and traffic situation. Most of the days that my son goes to school, he has to board in the middle of the street because there's not enough room for the bus to get over with the wheelchair lift up to the driveway. That backs up traffic. I've seen instances where the traffic will turn around and drive the wrong way down the boulevard and have to cut through, which really isn't certainly something that we wanted to have happen, nor do I want to feel guilty about causing that kind of situation. City services have been impacted, street sweepers in the summer, leaf vax, it's coming into that fall season, snow plows are going to have no place to put the drifts, delivery drivers have complained already, and most importantly, EMS and fire are not going to have any place to get up and down the street, it's going to be impossible to make the turns through the boulevard. And beyond the fact that the situation really just isn't good for property values on the street with pretty lofty assessments, which are completely justified based historically on the beauty of the street and how we appreciate it, the real important thing is the safety of the residents and the hardship that this is putting on the children and everybody else that wants to enjoy the city and enjoy the street.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Bill Wolf, I live at 1041 Vincetta. Three houses. Off of Woodward. Lived there 42 years. Never had a problem with all the other restaurants before, it wasn't an issue. I'll keep it brief. Couple Saturdays ago, my wife and I decided to take a little ride, so we counted the cars, we haven't mentioned numbers, 33 cars from the restaurant down to Lawndale. Then, we went all the way to Crooks and back, it's about a two-mile trip, there were only six cars, the rest of the way on Vincetta. So we do have a park setting, but it's being ruined right now. The other issue for me, anyway, is that if you go to Dugan's and you look at that street of Ravenna, it's a long street, there's 15 houses on either side, 30 houses, it's all permit parking, probably the same issue years ago. So I just wanted to give you some numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Yes, sir.
these people that I sympathize with them, but their problems paled comparing to the problems my neighborhood and my neighbors have on Knowles Street. Before I begin, I would like to exclude Commissioner Donigan from my comments, since she was not part of the previous decision, just out of fairness. Let me just go into history. Back in 1998, there was a site plan approval for the recycling facility across the street from Knowles, and they wanted to expand their facility. And as a condition of that expansion, there were certain provisions put forth into the site plan. One of them was that ingress into the facility for the semi-trucks would come from Main Street, going east on Hudson, and entered, entered, entered the facility on Hudson, unload and turn around on site, and get, turn around and get out and go back to Main Street through That was a compromise, and that neighborhood lived with that compromise and that expansion. That is until 2014, when Rizzo Company decided that they were not going to live by that agreement and the site plan. And they've decided that the best thing to do is to put the truck route on Knowles. So this document was presented to you, and as a result of that, this city commission ignored the recommendations of the traffic committee against installing the truck route on Knowles, ignored the recommendation of the city's engineer as well against that truck, truck route on Knowles, and instantly voted to put the truck route on Knowles. We had problems. The problems were related to the city manager and to the police. I'm going to list some of them. The truck drivers coming from every direction. They were supposed to go east on Hudson. They're coming from every direction. They are stopping, they're standing, they're parking. The drivers get out and urinate on the street, broad daylight. They are repairing vehicles on Knowles. And finally, the police caught them the other day. So what happened? Well, Commissioner Douglas voted in the affirmative, so has Mayor Furnier, back then the Commissioner, Commissioner Marley, then Mayor Ellison, Commissioner Dubach. Why? Well, the only reasonable explanation that I can think that that vote happened is because you all took, you all took money from Rizzo or their affiliates. Campaign finance report is on record. And you took money and instantly voted for that truck route. Commissioner Furnier, Mayor Furnier, you took the money. You took money, Commissioner Douglas, Commissioner Marley, you took money. Former Mayor Ellison took money from Rizzo and took money from Rizzo.
Mr. Schneider, your time is up.
For his state representative. Can I have five more minutes?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Can I have one more minute?
Ten more seconds, sir.
Okay. So you all took money, and as a result of that, what do we have now? We have indictments and guilty pleas from Rizzo affiliates.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Okay, who's next tonight? In the back. See a hand up way in the back? Yep. Is that Mr. Colo? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. I am Brandon Colo at 600 East Hudson Avenue. I come here tonight to speak upon the proposed snow removal ordinance that's on the agenda. When reading that, at first, I was a little excited. I think it's great we have a walkable city, and now we can have these sidewalks clear during the winter time. But then I started reading into it a little bit more, and the fines just seem too punitive. They are, they're too, too much. $100 for a first offense, $250 for a second offense within six months. While it's nice to have clear sidewalks, I believe that it's just too much money to charge citizens. We need to, I think, have a better way of educating citizens about the need to remove your snow. Let's find different solutions instead of rushing to an ordinance tonight. And then also, we've heard a lot about the Vincetta neighborhood tonight, and as everyone knows, I am running for city commission this year, and it really hits a tone with what I've been talking about pretty much the entire season. We see a need to reserve neighborhoods. Our master plan calls for it. I've spoken to this body about that before. So when we have the neighbors of Vincetta coming up and talking about the need to add these permits, it makes a lot of sense because their neighborhood didn't have these cars in them before this nice restaurant was added. That's great for the restaurant. It's booming. We can find another solution for the parking of the restaurant. We can find a solution for these neighbors so that they aren't crowded, so we don't have a little boy trying to get into a bus and unable to because the cars are just overtaking the neighborhood. So I hope that you would vote in favor of the neighbors tonight with that. So with that, I'll leave you, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colo. Yes, sir. Here, I think of the black. Yeah, that's black or dark gray.
My name's Dave Manzo. I live on 1030 Vincetta. I have had a business in Royal Oak and my home in Royal Oak for two decades. And I'm sorry for the disjointed nature of this, jumping from one issue to another, but you can actually extrapolate Mrs. Louse and the Knoll problem to ours. She talks about, you know, the value of her property and then the tax base being affected by it. And for me, I'm sure that's probably true for our neighborhood. But for me, the, the, the real value is in the heart, what I moved into and what I have now on my street. It's become a parking lot. And it's sad, and to see all these things be thrown about, it's, it's the intangibles for me that I'm losing there. I moved in with a great neighborhood, great support from fellow neighbors, including Wolf's. I mean, I remember when I first moved in, there are these decorative bridges over the median, and if you ride down Vincetta, and somebody hit one of those bridges and it crumbled, and the city didn't have the funds to fix it. They were going to remove them. And I saw the next day, neighbors in their rolled-up white shirtsleeves with trowels and cement bags and everything fixing it on their own. That's the kind of thing we have, or it's the kind of spirit we have in that neighborhood. And Mike Pappas, who owned the restaurant that we're all talking about, was a friend of mine, and he had a similar issue when his employees were required to park on the street so he had more room for, you know, his patrons. He solved that problem. How, I don't know. I think the issue here is, when you look inside the new restaurant, they have restructured it architecturally, where there's so much, so many crowded tables and so many more employees that it's untenable. I know, when I moved into my place over on 11 Mile Road, I had the, I had a certain constraint with so many square footage, so much square footage of my building and only so many parking lots per square foot. There's a formula, and I don't know what it is for medical, it's different than for restaurants, I presume. But I'd like to see what that formula is because it is just, the, the street's inundated with cars. And I have to tell you, as a single dad to a 16-year-old daughter, to see her now creep backwards out into the street with the cars coming around Woodward onto my street, it pains me. But my, and, and for someone to say that, to sympathize with ours, but we have no, there's no comparison of a problem that, to minimize our problem, is somewhat insulting because my problem is little. If I looked at everything here and I said, who's got the problem? To me, I, I, I'm not so concerned about myself. I can find my way. But the bigger problem is when you have Jace, Jace having a problem to get into the, into his bus and, and all these things that, they're conquering issues that are intangible. The same way that we lost the, the intangible beauty of our street, we're also losing the caring for each other by not trying to help each other with these kind of problems. And that's all I want to say. This is not just tangible. It's about the intangibles of our neighborhood and about, about that special aura that it has. I don't want to lose it because then the value in my heart for my neighborhood goes down.
Thank you, Dr. Manzo. All right, who's next tonight? Let's go with Ms. Hennessy.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Carol Hennessy, 258 East 11 Mile Road. I'm here to talk about Veterans Day and just remind everybody it's coming up, November 11th. The Royal Oak Memorial Society will be putting on their Veterans Day service promptly at 11:00 AM on November the 11th, and the service will be right outside at the Veterans Memorial Plaza. But before that, we're going to be having something interesting and new for this year, and that's the ruck run. And a ruck run is, or ruck march is carrying a backpack on your back while you're doing the run. You can run, walk, march, whatever you'd like to. And we're asking for the runners to carry a backpack and carry either 22 items or 22 pounds in their backpack. And that's representing the 22 veterans that commit suicide every day. And with the items that we collect out of the backpacks, we're going to present to the VA Hospital and also to the Vietnam Veterans Pantry in, I believe it's Warren. So it's, it's all going to good causes. The run is 2.2 miles, and it's going to start right outside here at the Star Dream, and it is going to end up at the VFW parking lot at Fourth and Troy. And at that time, you can leave your items in your backpack in containers that we'll have there for you. The cost of the run is $10 for anyone over 18 and $5 for anyone under 18, and any military personnel or retired, they're free. And we hope to have a good turnout this year since it's our first one, and hope you all join us and partake. And if you can't run or walk, just donate some stuff, like toothbrushes, toothpaste, combs, things like that, lifesavers, canned goods, anything like that. So we hope to see you all at the service, and if you're a runner or walker, please join us for the, the walk. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hennessy.
Oh, just one, one other thing. The, I talked at the last meeting about the piece of art that's out on the lawn by the monument, and I've been getting a lot of disturbing calls from veterans about it. So the week after I was here, they took down part of it and put something else. They took the circle out and put a square in there. So I didn't quite understand that, if they were going to change it or something, move it someplace else. So I don't know where we have to go with that, but I'd just like to comment on that, that I, I think if it's a, a piece of art that relates to veterans, that's fine, but we don't know what it is. We still don't know what it is. And anything you can do, we'd appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. See Mr. Karloski, had his hand up?
Rick Karloski, 419 Virginia, and I have a corner lot in Royal Oak, so I'm here to talk about the snow ordinance. One of my sides does not have any green space. We'll start out with that. I don't have any green space, and every now and again, the plow will come by, and I understand it's 3:00 in the morning, he's a little bit, he's a little bit tired, too, a little bit too fast, and then flu mechanics takes over, and instead of my nice cleanly taken-care-of sidewalk, I have a glacier. And just nature of the beast is going to compact it, it's going to get all over the sidewalk, and it's going to get very hard and very, very solidified in a big hurry. Just the nature of the beast. Okay, that's prime. Usually, I can get up a little, a berm and, and, and take care of it for most of the year, but every now and again, it happens. I can take care of that. Where I have a problem is if you guys are going to start giving me a fine of $100 and cost for removal. I'll take care of the snow nature puts on, but if you're going to put it there, I think I should have a, myself and other people of the same situation should have a little leeway here. Secondly is the, the timeline. 24 hours, I understand it's a four-inch snow, but we can't even plow the whole city in 24 hours. There are some people who either contract it out, or there are some seniors who probably have their, their kids come over and take care of their snow. You're not going to get it done in 24 hours. You're going to have to lengthen that a little bit, 48, maybe even 72 hours. I understand the, the request for the ordinance. In my neighborhood, I think the biggest problem has always been the rentals. It's not been the private ownership people. I have a snow thrower, so I, I take care of some of the older folks that are around the neighborhood. But for those who don't, and, or who either contract out or need family to come in and take care of it, 24 hours is way too short. And I also would agree that there has to be some similar, I mean, $100 is a bit much. There has to be some kind of leeway for a first-time offense. Somebody may be on vacation, you suddenly have a snowstorm, and they didn't, you know, they can't, couldn't call a neighbor or something. So while I understand the, the need for it or the, the want for it to make it, you know, more walkable, I don't like trouncing through a whole lot of snow when I'm walking around. There has to be a little bit more common sense to what you guys are doing. Again, 24 hours is way too, too little, and there has to be some leeway for those of us who don't have a green space and, and the plow suddenly putting, putting all the snow you just removed right back onto your, onto your sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison.
Bill Harrison, 2729 Trafford. My initial intent tonight was to dispel, to come here and dispel the allegation that no-bid contracts are the only way to deliver public projects. The DDA had seven bidders for the I-696 development that is ultimately awarded to SING. Birmingham has an RFP for a mixed-use development and parking structure that went out to four pre-qualified developers. The bids are due January 3, 2018. However, Saturday, I received a very disturbing letter from Jim Ellison that was financed by the mayor, the commissioner running for reelection, and two new candidates for the commission. The letter alleges that there is something nefarious about the fundraising for the opposition candidates because they are in part financed by a PAC. While Jim Ellison in 2016 received money from three PACs, one of which was Rizzo and the other was from the Plunkett Cooney PAC. There were five contributions of $1,000 each from waste and recycling companies, including the Rizzo PAC, and management of the facility that Rizzo has owned since 2013 in Royal Oak, as you've heard tonight, at Knowles and Hudson. Three commissioners also received contributions from Rizzo PAC and/or Rizzo Management. This is the same Rizzo, whose owners are now convicted felons for bribing municipalities. And the Plunkett Cooney attorney that represented Rizzo before the Oakland County Solid Waste Planning Committee now represents Boje. It's a tight circle, friends. Another attorney that represented Rizzo regarding the truck route through the neighborhood and Boje's architect for the Civic Center hosted a fundraiser for the mayor last Saturday. two thousand and thirteen in Royal Oak, as you've heard tonight, at Knowles and Hudson. Three commissioners also received contributions from Rizzo PAC and/or Rizzo Management. This is the same Rizzo, whose owners are now convicted felons for bribing municipalities. And the Plunkett Cooney attorney that represented Rizzo before the Oakland County Solid Waste Planning Committee now represents Boji. It's a tight circle, friends. Another attorney that represented Rizzo regarding the truck route through the neighborhood, and Boji's architect for the Civic Center hosted a fundraiser for the mayor last Saturday. Tight circle, friends. So, why is it, six items, why is it the Rizzo's truck route through the residential neighborhood was approved? The attorney that represents Boji is involved with just about every project in town. Boji and the city share the same parking consultant. Rich &amp; Associates designs all the parking structures with no-bid contracts, again, no-bid contracts. Noah Confraus does all the civil work when there are three other pre-qualified firms for civil work in the city, for the city. And finally, Krieger Klatt is the architect on most all of the projects, and one of the firm's principals is on the DDA. If there's anything nefarious going on, it is with the current team, not the opposition candidates. You know, it is a common political strategy to deflect attention to the other party by accusing them of what you are doing, and that is just exactly what Jim Ellison's letter is doing. We need to take a tip from the Detroit Tigers and elect a new manager and team members from the opposing bench. And I've got a minute left, so I want to ask, what's going on with the treasurer that was walked out? I'm hearing that there's no criminal intent or anything like that, and the word on the street is that he's a whistleblower, and you're keeping under wraps until after the, after the election. Thank you.
Mr. Ellison?
Jim Ellison, thirteen-oh-nine Mohawk, Royal Oak. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, I was just going to come here and listen, but, excuse me, Mr. Wolf.
Mr. Ellison, Mr. Ellison, please direct your attention towards the...
You know what? I get tired of these constant blasts of people, and, and the stuff that's made up. Let me, let me calm down a little bit and try to address what Mr. Harrison just said. Yes, during my campaign, I took money from PACs, committee PACs, business PACs. What I didn't take money from is a super PAC, which is the PAC that we're talking about in this election. It's very defined by law that these super PACs cannot coordinate with a campaign of a candidate. And that's what is happening, and that is what's being pointed out. Candidates all over this state have always taken PAC money. It's the way the system works, it's limited, it's a thousand-dollar max. And I also heard him start bringing up that I took money from the owner of Royal Oak Recycling. I worked there for three and a half years. The Mamu family is friends of mine, and they have been for years. So, yes, they're going to contribute to my campaign. The operation that goes in Royal Oak had nothing to do with the bad deeds that were being done on, in, in Shelby Township, or Clinton Township, but they're grasping at stuff to try to disperse not only my name and your name, Mr. Mamu's name, all, all in the, in, in the vein of trying to validate what they're doing. I sent a letter out to this community supporting the candidates that I supported with the information that I had and the feelings that I had, and that comes from thirteen years of sitting in that seat, Mr. Fournier, and knowing what it need, what, what needs to happen to run this city. I'm not seeing, I don't want to go down, I want to turn this into a political platform. But again, I, I can't sit out there, and, and as I have for thirteen years, listen to people disperse my reputation, slander me, and libel me publicly. I'm not going to sit here and take it anymore. I, I just, I'll just start listening closer to these, these, these things that are being made up about me, and I may have to react. Mr. Wolf, I apologize for losing my temper, but it really is not fair to sit here right behind me and start talking as I'm talking. That is what's, we've lost in this city, is common courtesy, to address people and talk to people, and let real, real discussion happen. All we have is anger, and made-up stories, and falsehoods. Thank you.
Mr. Ellison. See a hand right here in the middle, right behind Mr. Harrison? I can't see a face, but I can see a hand. Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I am Dr. Wallace Anderson, four-zero-four, Mount Vernon Boulevard. I attended the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum Wednesday, October eleventh, and I was really glad to have the opportunity. As most people know, and I'm going to quote from the Oakland County League's website, "The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization encouraging the informed and active participation of citizens in government. It influences public policy through education and advocacy." The resolution you passed September eleventh enabled this forum by aligning Royal Oak with most, if not all, of the other cities in southeast, east Michigan, which provide the league with room and cable coverage at no charge to the league. And as I think everybody would pretty much agree, voter education is essential to citizens' informed participation in government at all levels. We're finding it now very, very important here at the local level, I believe. I want to mention that for those who are unable to attend the forum, whether in this room or watching from afar, I encourage you to watch it on WROK, where it is frequently replayed. You just go to the City of Royal Oak website, click on Government, scroll down to WROK, click on Programming, click on the October seven, twenty-seventeen Cable Guide Update link, and the schedule should pop up for you. Alternately, alternatively, and I found this a little bit easier, just go to YouTube and search for WROK Cable TV. So, I encourage everybody to do that if you weren't a part of the forum.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. See in the back there, a hand? I can't see a face again. In the far back, yes, it just went down. Out's up, yeah.
Good evening, Greg's Dental HO, six-seventeen Dewey. I didn't expect to make it tonight. My baby sister is fighting the second most aggressive breast cancer there is. Her day today was spent for sitting for eight and a half hours watching various poisons drip into her chest wall port. It's a pretty terrible thing to go through, equally terrible to watch, knowing that there's not much you can do except to provide support. And just as the poison makes its way into her body to fight an even greater monster, the cancer, while I thought about not attending the meeting tonight, my little sister's tenacity in fighting the cancer monster gave me the resolve to get here. And here to help fight the monster where I can make a difference with and for the poison that's been running through the city, the administration, and the dealings with various voting taxpayers. The poison has to stop, and the only way to stop it is to beat the monster with facts. People have already been up here, but we have a Central Park development in the Boji group. This administration formed a subcommittee, three people that were, been responsible for many of the back-room meetings about this project. Of course, you do that so you don't have to violate the Open Meetings Act. And of course, after Mr. Ellison was no longer the mayor, that subcommittee is made up of Michael Fournier, Dave Polton, and Kyle Dubek. Pretty interesting. Mr. Dennis Cohen, the Boji Attorney of Record, is part of the hosting committee for Dave Polton's recent fundraiser, as listed right there. Now, how does that work when all this talk about collusion and PACs and everything is going around? Again, always one-sided, but pretty interesting, to say the least. And then we've got Rizzo and Royal Oak. Seems that the Boji Attorney of Record is also the Rizzo Attorney of Record. Mr. Cohen, how interesting. And Jim Razor, familiar name, the Rizzo Attorney for the petition allowing the Rizzo truck routes to flow through south Royal Oak, and presented that case to the City Commission. At that time and prior to the vote, five of you, four of you, took campaign money. Mr. Fournier, Mr. Polton, Mr. Marley, Shar Douglas, and Jim Ellison all accepted campaign contributions from Rizzo, Rizzo PAC, or Joe Moonen, the director at Rizzo. And Mr. Ellison, since then, has taken additional monies, as all part of public record. None of the above was made note, and nobody recused themselves from the vote, at the same time that then-Mayor Ellison had worked for the Royal Oak Recycling, which was the entity to benefit from the approved neighborhood truck route during the sale of Royal Oak Recycling to Rizzo. Pending the sale of Royal Oak Recycling by Mr. Habib to Rizzo, and as you know, the Attorney of Record was, yes, Mr. Cohen. We then come to fiscal responsibility, or lack thereof, no-bid contracts, ballooning legacy costs that we bond out and call that a boon, that's using one credit card to pay another one, five-point-five million in developer free money, more no-bid contracts. Let's talk about some of the fiscal irresponsibility. People running this city, Mr. Fournier, was the American Laser and Skincare Director, Financial Planning and Analysis, and Treasury Director, prior to them filing bankruptcy with assets of a half a million dollars and more than a hundred million dollars of debt in Chapter Seven. One of our new candidates, Mr. Colo tonight, talked about snow removal fines, he should understand mandated fines. He's been a busy boy. In addition to campaigning, and Mr. Dubek knows, because he's functioning as campaign manager, Mr. Colo and company has been in Oakland County Circuit Court for most of this year. He's tried not to pay creditors, leases, Royal Oak property taxes, and was issued a default judgment in the amount of a hundred and forty-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars and eighty cents. Great fiscal responsibility, people we want running this city. Five accounts garnished to try to pay off that debt. And obviously, if we're backing him, and we're supporting his campaign as a campaign finance or campaign manager, we're promoting this. And then again, don't be fooled by the misinformation arriving in your mailbox, especially with regard to the Civic Center proposal. Former Mr. Ellison, let's talk facts. Mr. Ellison took Rizzo contributions, plus over a dozen other PAC contributed to his campaign, thousands of dirty, dirty dollars. Wow, Rizzo, Boji, Central Park, and free tax dollars, and a whole bunch of people with fiscal irresponsibility. And like my sister, your fight's not nearly over. As the press and information continue to come out, we're still digging through it, this is just the beginning. It's time to rid Royal Oak of this poison. You know the AC/DC song, Dirty Deeds Done Dirt Cheap? Apparently, they've been done that way in Royal Oak a long time. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Who's next? Mr. Rapinski.
Mike Rapinski, three-one-five-two Parker. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I'm sending back their, I think, I have this statement prepared, and I was going to use it, not use it, use it, not use it, and after listening for the last fifteen, twenty minutes or so, I'm going through with this. I've been a resident of Royal Oak for over forty years, and as many of you know, I've been involved in our community. I currently sit on the Parks and Rec and Senior Advisory Board, the Civil Service Board, I serve as Chair of the Normandy Oaks Task Force, and I'm also on the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce. Additionally, along with my wife Dawn, we are active members of the Royal Oak Optimists Club, we support the Boys and Girls Club, and many other charities in this community. So, when I speak to you tonight, I bring a devotion and passion for this community that comes, I think, with a fair amount of credibility. I'm also fiercely independent in my views and the way I choose to vote. I've supported candidates and issues on both the left and the right, and often find myself in the middle of debates and discussions, looking for a compromise. Today, I find myself greatly disturbed and annoyed with the tone and atmosphere of the current elections, particularly from a group I'll call the obstructionists. The amount of misinformation, unfounded accusations, and outright lies from this group make me sick to my stomach, and should make any informed citizen of this city feel the same way. Let's start with the allegations about the farmer's market. They said somehow this was going to go away, save the farmer's market, that's what we heard, and people got all riled up about the farmer's market. Nothing could be further than the truth. It was a cheap headline-grabbing slime piece loaded with false information and half-truth and distortions. The market's not going anywhere, we all know it and they know it. Is there going to be different parking situation? Yes. Will there be added parking in the general vicinity? Yes. Will there be some temporary destruction, disturbance during construction? Yes. And in the end, we'll still have ample parking, it's just going to look different than it does today, and the farmer's market will be just as vibrant as it was, is today, and maybe even more so. Don't believe the lies on that one. And why will that look different? Because we're going to have an exciting new, up-to-date public safety facility with energy-saving and cost-saving features that will bring us out of the dark ages of police buildings. You only have to visit the current dilapidated police building to see for yourself that this is desperately needed. Our police officers and command officers deserve nothing less. We also need, dearly need a new city office building. This has been well documented. I have to use this building on many occasions, and it's very difficult to navigate, and frankly, it's a mess. I, I think that the maintenance and repair issues are going to escalate, and how many more times can the city staff endure a water main break in this building? The location of the new city office makes sense, as it consolidates with the courthouse and public safety. The only thing I ask is that, let's not overbuild it, let's be smart about what we do. Now, the obstructionists may tell you that either these buildings are not needed or they're poorly planned. They also like to mention that a back-room deal was made to create new, to create this new office space. Let's talk about this. If they were paying attention, they would realize the whole idea of a new city center with a new office building was first proposed several years ago by Mr. Serno with the Serno Group. The proposal was vetted by city staff, voted on by prior commissions, and Mr. Serno was given an exclusive development agreement, I believe it was for six months. Unfortunately, Mr. Serno passed away, as we all know, suddenly. During this time, to my knowledge, no one came forward with a new proposal. Then, a new group came forward, the Boji and Serno Group, the sons of Mr. Serno, and during an open and again transparent process, including several public presentations right here in these chambers, they were selected to proceed. A back-room deal? Absolutely not. And to suggest otherwise without a shred of truth is unethical and borderline slanderous. I'm offended by the rhetoric suggesting that our past and current city commissioners, mayors, and city staff are accused of something like this. I know these folks. They have integrity beyond reproach and are honest, hard-working public servants. To the obstructions, to the obstructionists, I say, shame on you for suggesting otherwise. They also suggest that this is going to be a burden on the taxpayers. I'll be wrapping up real quick. It's not true. There are no new taxes in this project. Again, I repeat, there are no new taxes, the cost is handled through existing taxes and the general fund and bonding. And it's not a gift. A gift by definition is when you give something and expect nothing in return. The city, which means all of us, get a new office building, attracting hundreds of workers, not to mention construction jobs, these workers will spend money in our downtown and hopefully become new residents. And pay attention here, the city receives added tax revenue in the thousands of dollars over twenty-year period. How is this a gift? I'm not going to go on any further. I just want to mention one other thing, because it's been brought up, about the super PAC that has been formed to support some of the alternative opinions. All you have to do...
Mr. Rapinski, I do need you to finish up real quick.
Finishing up right now. Do not be fooled by the amended campaign statements that just happened in the last couple of days. The main person behind this PAC is only interested in his agenda, not in our interests, and not moving the city forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rapinski. Mr. Wayrun.
Brendan Wayrun, seven-oh-two Irving. I'm not going to show it to anybody, but I do have some questions and suggestions. I attended the meeting at six-thirty about the developments toward a new city hall. And I've got to say, Krieger Klatt has come up with one of the nicest buildings I've seen them designed, so I think that's good. However, in displacing parking in the farmer's market, I still have to ask, what you're going to do with Second Street? I can't get an answer on if Second Street is going to remain two-way. It has to, it needs to be a ring road for us, and somebody has to decide that and tell us. There's a walkway from the entrance of the city hall to the court, which is taking up maybe eight spaces. I can't, I just can't believe I'm talking about saving eight spaces in the farmer's market lot, because so many are be, gone away. But anyway, that, that, that has to go away. We need as much space, as much parking in the farmer's market lot as we could get, because you are taking half. Now, one of the things they presented was the staging for all these buildings. And as far as I can tell, they're going to start everything at once, and it's going to run for sixteen months. Essentially, you're taking away our, our whole Civic Center area for a year and a half. And I think we need a town hall... And I think we need a town hall. Before they decide, you need to take a look at what they're saying and show us, because you're doing these things to us and not necessarily for us. So that's what I would like to ask, that you, or suggest, that you have a town hall and staging, because everything seems to start in the spring or July. And, you know, I won't be able to use the library, no, people won't be able to get to city hall. It's just not, it's just not right. They should be spread out, and if you're doing it for the good of Mr. Boji—well, I'm sorry, Mr. Boji can wait. The presentation was given with a nice PowerPoint. I was assured by the Assistant City Manager that someone would look into presenting the, putting the presentation, the PowerPoint, on the website, and I would request that you request that too, because we should know what's going on. And I realize that it's going to be kind of difficult to know what those mean without the people presenting it, but at least it's something, because we're not getting anything. We're just told when you've done it, and what we're going to have as soon as it's done. Well, I think we need to know more about it. And I would ask that you read the emails that I sent all of you about the snow removal thing. I think it should never have been on the agenda as a first reading. It's not in ordnance yet. It's something you should talk about first, and if you have to have a special meeting to do that, that's fine. But you should know, you should never be putting something like that to a vote when you don't even know that's a good idea, and plenty of people tonight have told you, it's really not a good thing for a number of reasons. So I would hope to see my questions from the email as part of the discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Wayring.
Good evening. Laura Harrison, 2729 Trafford Road. The biggest reason I got involved in this election was because I consider what is going on at the farmer's market another threat to its viability. This market is probably pretty close to the last real retail vestige in downtown. Last Friday, local news announced that the owners of Haberman's were retiring, God bless them, and had sold the business. Their original store, actually not their first store, their original store in Royal Oak was on Fourth Street, one of downtown's mainstays. Because of parking issues and needing more floor space, they moved south of Lincoln. They rehabbed an existing building and carried on. According to the article, the business, which has been purchased, is moving to Claussen after the first of the year. Another retail loss for Royal Oak. I should also mention that when the store was on Fourth Street, there was and still is a parking structure less than 500 feet from their front door. Daytime customers, mostly women and handicap, do not do structures. Women are afraid of structures. I am terrified of them. Sorry, that's just one of my little foibles. The same can be said about the farmer's market. I did a quick survey earlier this year from my customers, who come from all over Oakland and Wayne County, even a few from McComb. And if they, if they were farmer's market customers, if their only alternative to parking is a structure, they will find another market. And that is not that hard to do. There are markets in Pontiac, Birmingham, Claussen, Lethra Village, and of course, Eastern Market. I had lunch last week with a bunch of my high school peeps. One of them has shopped with her sister at Royal Oak Farmer's Market for years, and still does. She is on a first-name basis with the market vendors. They are friends. At lunch, she expressed concern regarding being able to continue as a customer. My friend Joan has MS and is now in a wheelchair. To her, this wheelchair is just a slight inconvenience. She is more worried about the market vendors. This is their livelihood. Farmer's Market is the epitome of small business. Even losing surface parking during construction could be up to two years. Small business cannot last longer than several months with that kind of thing going on. Two other things. First of all, about the parking on Woodward problem, our subdivision solved that problem many years ago when the, I can't remember the name of the hard, no, kind of store that sells guns and all that stuff. That building, there, they had, the city had, or the residents had asked the city to make the first block off of Woodward, no parking, and it still is, and it works. That is the best sample I can give you of how to solve part of the parking problem on Woodward. One other thing, real quick, I know I'm going to go over, I keep looking at this, makes me nervous. I don't know if you all know, I am a military granddaughter, daughter, brother, sister, wife, nephew. Got five generations here of military people. I am insulted by that piece of garbage you've got and our dedicated property over there by the military statue, et cetera. That is horrible. We spent a lot of money to get it out of where it was, had to put a Second Street where we tried to have our services—
Ms. Harrison, I'm going to have to have you finish it up.
I know, I'm almost done. Our services, and had to be, listen to beer trucks unloading, and we moved it over there. I want that piece out of there. That is insult to me, to my husband, who is a Vietnam hero, and my hero.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Who's next? Mr. Wolf.
Heard a lot of hyperbole. Ron Wolf, 33 North Troy. We heard a lot of hyperbole and mixing of apples and pears. You know, the opposing candidates, which I hope will have a clean sweep, do not always agree with each other, and I'm sure I'm going to have some issues with them. The big difference is, I think I'll be treated a little more respectfully. I would like to know, Mr. Krison, is Mr. Johnson retiring after this Boji thing goes through? Something that's floating around. I don't know who's going to be holding the bag. You heard a lot of accusations tonight. Political pay-to-play is normal in this country these days. Our forefathers were obstructionists to the British Empire. The tea tax, I'm sure there was, the British considered it very fair and appropriate, but colonists disagreed and threw it in the harbor, just like they're going to throw the tea in the harbor this time around with the Royal Oak City Commission. I hope hopefully. I just want to point out, as far as the neighborhoods are concerned, these new offices are going to bring a lot of street parking in the neighborhoods, along with the parking from the bars and all the problems with that. And I suggest that all neighborhoods within a mile of Woodward or any major offices be permit parking only, and each home receive two extra permits for visitors in case they need, you know, visitors to come over for helping seniors, et cetera, et cetera. I know we have this problem on Troy Street, and it's going to increase. I also would like to suggest that this city look carefully into what Birmingham does this time. Birmingham has an ethics commission of three members. They even have an ethics complaint form that any citizen can fill out if they feel there is a violation of conflicts of interest or ethics. So we don't have to hear obstructionists and, what was I called, a liar and a moron by Don Johnson? You don't have, I don't have to listen to that. All I have to do is fill out a form and submit it. Pat Capello tried her best to ask for an ethics affirmation before each vote, because the conflicts of interest got so bad. Who were the main dissenters? Mayor Ellison and Jim Razor. Okay, so now we're here because Ron Boji, a known political fundraiser and receiver of lucrative government contracts, has come to Royal Oak. I wish, I only wish, Mr. Sernow, his father was still alive. He would, he's probably spinning wherever he is resting right now, because he would be furious that Ron Boji is taking over his cherished project. And I would have probably gone along with it somehow. I do, I would like to see a new police station. I would like to see a city park. A city park, you have kids running around in circles in kiddie parks, not knowing what to do, teenagers. These are at-risk kids for opiate abuse. Your seniors at risk. They would all like to have a central park where they can go to and relax and enjoy. What do you pay taxes for? We need a resident-first commission. That's all the city is asking for, and I hope that's how they're going to vote. And the only way I can see it is, please, this coming November 7th, I'm sure there are already people out there that are upset that they already filled out their absentee ballot, and they think they may have voted for the wrong people. Well, those who haven't voted, please, do not vote for any other candidates, any other commissioners, and any other, I call them baton-pass commissioners, like Ms. Macy and Mr. Colo, who while are great people, have been invited to join what I call a private club. This private club stuff has got to stop. We need a commission that represents the people of Royal Oak and puts residents first and stops putting special interests first. Please, please, people out there, I'm talking to you out there, people. Please. I know that the opposing candidates are not perfect, but for the first time, you have people that are willing to step up and face the cannon fire and to get elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Okay, who's next? Yes, sir, Mr. Regan.
Good evening. Tom Regan, I live at 3126 Glenview, and I'm a volunteer for the Environmental Advisory Board. Over 10 years ago, I was appointed to the task force that first started working on this bicycle, non-motorized transportation plan. Speaking in favor of Item 9 on your agenda, you're going to get a recommendation from the Traffic Committee that we set up our first north-south bicycle route in Royal Oak. And I wish I could say I'm delighted. I'm not. I'm a little disappointed it's not more. Only half of it is dedicated bike lanes, and it took over 10 years to get this far. So that's my complaint. But yeah, I am glad it has moved to this point, and I hope we keep pushing for more improvements in the future. But I have to switch gears and talk about the election, the city commissioner election. It's been quite distressing. I keep getting this literature from the Skinner, Gibbs, Carlowski, Lavassier slate, and the literature is remarkable for a couple of reasons. The first reason is just the number of outright lies in the literature. Now, the political literature is often exaggerated or contains vapid nonsense. I mean, we're used to that. But this year, it's different. We're seeing repeated outright lies, and that's a different thing. It's distressing. I'll give an example, just in their clean sweep literature, they talk about the city commission, "They raised your property taxes." And again, that's an obvious lie. The city commission cannot raise our property taxes. Only we, the people, can vote to raise our property taxes. And so they knew this was a lie, and they put it in their literature anyways, and they sent it out to every house in Royal Oak. That's disturbing. Another thing they key on is this "for sale $1, it's a steal" thing. They talk about the Civic Center development. They claim repeatedly that land was given to a developer. And again, another obvious lie. Nothing was given away as part of the payment for the development. There's an in-kind transfer of land. Everybody knows that's common in all, city entities do that all the time, and they knew this was a lie, and they put this lie in their literature and mailed it out to every house in Royal Oak. That tells you something about the Skinner, Gibbs, Carlowski, Lavassier slate, that they do something like that. But I think the third thing that's unusual about this campaign is this dark money super PAC. So we find out this weekend that not only is this divisive, deceitful campaign being funded by a dark money super PAC, some guy named Don Nahat, who apparently is upset that his development wasn't picked, and so he's attempting to purchase a majority of the city commission. He's backing four people, purchasing a majority of the city commission with a dark money super PAC. It's distressing. I'm really, really sad that Royal Oak politics has sunk to this level, and I hope after this election, we do something about public financing of city elections so that we don't have to repeat this kind of thing in future years, because it looks like we need to do something as a city to protect ourselves against people like Skinner, Gibbs, Carlowski, Lavassier, and this dark money super PAC that's attempting to purchase a majority of the Royal Oak City Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. Who's next? Yes, Ms. Gibbs.
Thank you for the introduction, Mr. Regan. I'm here today, Kim Gibbs, 3342 Harvard Road. I'm here today to address some concerns that have been raised to me by a number of residents over in Precinct 2, specifically the Irving Truck Route. And I noticed today, as I was going through the consent agenda items, that there is a payment, consent agenda item for payment of $1,250 to Fleisen Vandenbeek. The residents concerned are wondering, what is the result of that survey, the online survey that they took, to figure out whether or not their berms and their fences are going to be replaced? The reports to me have been a lot of speeding, many cars driving every single day, speeding down, and as it's used as a cut-through to get around 696 and to get around the service drive. And there have been two accidents on Mohawk, which I believe is Mr. Ellison's street, and I don't know, I don't have the reports on these, but it's what I've been told. These are concerns of the residents, and all we're looking for is when the survey results will be available to them. If you can address that question maybe before you approve the consent agenda, it would be very much appreciated. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Good, Ms. Gibbs. Yes.
I keep changing this, as I'm hearing people talk, but before I forget, the dark money super PAC, I don't know why it's char—can't hear me? Thank you. Should I start over? Dark money super PAC, I don't know why it's characterized as that, because my mailers clearly state that they came from this PAC, super PAC. So that was it. Going to bike lanes and the proposal tonight on the north-south route, I noticed that you did not include the Campbell Route, and I don't know why, I still see it on the website. But before that is done, before you decide to put it on a road diet, make bike lanes in each direction, take away two northbound, southbound lanes, I think you need to meet with the residents along there. They know nothing about it. And I live in that neighborhood— And I live in that neighborhood. I don't live on Campbell... Excuse me, but I live on... Live in that neighborhood, and that's a very congested route. And the night of the candidate forum, they were working at 11 Mile and Campbell, and just one northbound lane was blocked off there, and it created gridlock at Fourth. And the traffic is actually less north of Fourth. So I really think you need to get with the residents to discuss it. Snow removal. I think you need to define that a little bit more because you've got greater than four inches, but it doesn't... You have to have it removed within 24 hours. That doesn't consider... What if you have an eight or a 10 or a 12-inch snowfall? I have one gentleman who does a lot of different houses in the neighborhood, and he can usually get to it within 24 hours. But if there's an eight, 10, 12, he's not going to make it in that period of time. So I think you need to make some sort of adjustment for that, if you're going to do it. Okay. So you knew parking was coming, my pet peeve. At the farmer's market, I sent an email to the mayor three weeks ago explaining why so many people have come before this board about the lack of parking, surface parking at farmer's market. I brought posters, tried to explain to you that what you say on the website, what you say in public, is like apples to oranges. 345 spaces on the website or over 300 spaces of public parking in the farmer's market lot is true, but it's not public parking. The public isn't going to be able to use all those spaces. So I asked, please look at the website, please make some adjustments so it's presenting factual information. I was told that you would meet with the city and discuss a way to clarify it. I didn't see anything change. So a week later, I sent another email saying, "Are you still going to get with the city?" Still going to get with the city. So it's now been three weeks. Nothing's changed. I didn't get an email back saying, "I met with the city and I plan on..." They say, "We're going to leave it that way because it's still in flocks or we think it presents it properly." It just stayed the same. So it looks like there's going to be 345 spaces available to visitors of the farmer's market, and it's not. A lot of that will be for the police, the police station, courthouse. So I'm not happy. And then back to the statement that the farmer's market... It's true. Back to the statement that nothing's going to happen to the farmer's market. The farmer's market will survive, and I've said this over and over again. Nobody knows that. Nobody knows if it's going to survive. Nobody knows if it's going to fail. We don't know what the longevity of it's going to be until after the impact of all this loss of parking, the construction, the timeframe that's going on, the staging of the project, et cetera. We don't know what that impact's going to be. You believe it's going to last. You believe it's going to last, that it's not going to have an impact. I don't, and I think the people who signed the petition to save the farmer's market don't believe it either. So we're both very passionate in our beliefs, and I hope you're right, but I fear you're wrong. Thank you.
All right, who's next? Yes, I see a hand back there, blue. Is that Mr. Esprit? Now I can see you.
Esprit, 4135 South Fulton Place. I think it's kind of appropriate that I have my 30-year anniversary t-shirt on from Make-A-Wish. Those of you who don't know Mr. Sernow would be told that one of his great passions in life was supporting the Make-A-Wish tour. I've done the Make-A-Wish tour with his sons the last three years, and when he was killed in Hawaii doing what we both love, it was a naked little emotional... You know when I talk about it? So when this gentleman comes up here and says that Mr. Sernow would be turning over in his grave, sick twist on me goes, "What happened?" The fact of the matter is, Mr. Wolf, you don't even know Mr. Sernow. Why don't you leave his reputation and his legacy alone? And I would tell you that Mr. Sernow, one of the things that he loved to do during Make-A-Wish, he always had a t-shirt that said, "What are you waiting for?" And when you talk about wanting to... You know, you could approach Jeffrey and say, "Hey, listen, what about this, what he did, what about this?" His thing was always, "What are you waiting for?" And he would be very proud that his sons are carrying on his legacy. He'd be very proud that Mr. Boji came along and brought this project back to life. And like I said at the previous meetings, this is a great project. Those folks out there who are saying that this is a $5.5 million giveaway, I mean, you know, if we take and think about this in a grander scale, I mean, we all know right now that Amazon is shopping for a second location, and city leaders throughout the country are falling over themselves to put together incentive packages to attract Amazon. I'd ask anybody in this room, any major metropolitan area who just says, "We're not going to do anything, and Amazon is just going to come to us," I'd say, "You might want to wake up." We know that Mayor Duggan and Dan Gilbert are working together to put together incentive packages as our community leaders and area leaders throughout the entire country. So when the obstructionist slate, I like that term, sits there and says that this is a $5.5 million giveaway and it's a complete waste of money, it is an incentive that is being used constantly by cities and areas throughout the country. You know, Mr. Marley, I think you asked a very good question of Senator Nolenberg about the bill that was passed in the Senate. Would you say it was 35 to four, whatever it was? I don't remember the exact vote. And again, incentives. And it was... Those bills were approved across party lines because we know that in any region, it's such as Royal Oak, any region throughout the state, throughout the country, if you want to attract big business, if you want to make things attractive, incentives are just part of it. There's nothing nefarious about that, and those people who are suggesting otherwise are just simply lying. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Esprit. Anybody else tonight? Going once? Going twice? Okay, we're going to bring the meeting back up to here, which brings us to the approval of the agenda. Before we move forward with the approval of the agenda, I would like to add to the agenda an item number 11, Paradiso versus the city of Royal Oak. In addition to that, are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Okay. So I will entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda with the one suggested change. We have a motion by Commissioner Polton. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Marley. Discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? The motion passes. All right, that brings us to item number seven, the consent agenda, which consists of city commission meeting minutes from October 9th, 2017, claims October 13th and October 24th, 2017, approval of purchase order, appointments committee recommendations, city clerk requests to fill vacancy, proclamation designated November 16, 2017, World Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day, approval of amendment to parking management agreement, departments of public service and recreation requests to fill vacancy, contract modification to contract CAP 1710, water main improvements, grant of easements of public water main and sanitary sewer line at the Northwood Shopping Center Development, and finally, grant of easement for stormwater detention facility at Northwood Shopping Center Development. Is there a motion for the consent agenda? Motion by Commissioner Polton, supported by Commissioner Marley. Any discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? The motion passes. All right, that brings us to item number eight, which is the Michigan Liquor Control Commission license establishment request. We're going to have a public hearing on the request by Inseason Cafe, 500 East Fourth Street, for its plan of operation amendment. Who's kicking this off?
Lieutenant Moore.
Lieutenant Moore?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, City Commission. The Royal Oak Police Department received a quest from ISC Management Group Incorporated to transfer location of a Class C resort liquor license to 500 East Fourth Street in the city of Royal Oak. This license was purchased from Asian Grill and Sushi LLC at 27454 Gration Avenue in Roseville, Michigan. The applicants are currently doing business as the Inseason Cafe. The applicants purchased the Class C resort liquor license for $72,500. The applicants have been actively involved in the restaurant business and operating the Inseason Cafe since 2002. Prior to purchasing the Inseason Cafe, the applicants owned and operated the Sunflower Cafe in Ann Arbor from 2001 until 2003. The Sunflower Cafe included a Class C resort license in its plan of operation, and an MLCC check of the Sunflower Cafe revealed no violation history at that location. If approved, the applicants will operate a vegan and vegetarian restaurant serving both bottled beer and wine. The Inseason Cafe is currently open Tuesday to Thursday from 11:30 a.m. until 9:00 p.m., Friday from 11:30 a.m. until 9:30 p.m., Saturday from 12:00 p.m. until 9:30 p.m., and Sunday from 11:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. These hours will remain unchanged. The applicants expect their food-to-alcohol ratio to be 90% food to 10% alcohol. The applicants also own the adjoining building at 502 East Fourth Street. The applicants currently use this space for food storage, and this space will also be used to store additional beer and wine for the Inseason Cafe. It should be noted, this area is not zoned for off-site storage, and this setup violates our zoning ordinance. The Inseason Cafe is not requesting an entertainment or dance permit. The applicants purchased this Class C resort license with the guidance of a law firm, and once the license was obtained, they began serving both beer and wine to their customers without contacting the Royal Oak Police Department. And this department became aware of the alcohol service and ordered the applicants to cease operations of all alcohol sales. They did comply, and they began this process of seeking an approved plan of operation. The Inseason Cafe is a small restaurant that's been in business since 1983. It focuses on a niche customer base. It closes no later than 9:30 p.m., and it will not include a bar component. The Police Department does not anticipate this request to cause any additional strain on police resources. However, we do not object to the request. There are multiple planning and building department issues beyond just the off-site storage that are too numerous to list tonight. The Police Department would suggest the city commission hold off on deciding on this plan of operation until the building and planning issues can be resolved. And just for the record, the majority stakeholder, Mr. Raftus, is here tonight.
Do we have any questions for Lieutenant Moore? Commissioner Douglas.
Well, what are... I mean, do we have a timeframe on resolving the building and zoning issues? Who is... Whose lap is that in right now?
I know there have been discussions with the Planning Department and the Building Department directly with Mr. Raftus. I don't have a timeline for you tonight as to when those will potentially be resolved.
Isn't anything?
Nothing more. They are working together to try and resolve the issues.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Lieutenant Moore? Commissioner Dubois.
So is the Police Department's recommendation on holding off, is that based on any sort of public safety concern or just administrative concern coming from the other departments about reconciling these issues?
It's strictly administrative concern, though. No public safety issues.
Okay, so no public safety concern were they able to begin with service?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Raftus, do you wish to speak?
Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I have a little handout for you because I'd like to just tell you a little bit about the Inseason Cafe and what we're trying to accomplish over there on 500 East Fourth Street. So can I pass this?
Yeah, sure. Hand it to Ms. Alice, and she'll pass it down for us.
So we've been in business since 1981 at 500 East Fourth Street... Oh, let's start over. My name is Nicholas Raftus. I am the president of the ISC, which means Inseason Cafe Management Group. The chef and our general manager are also my stockholders and partners. I also own a business called Inseason Properties, which owns 500 and 502 East Fourth Street, and I am the sole owner of those properties. We have basically a national reputation for vegan and vegetarian food, creating a healthy, compassionate environment, being civically and community-minded, and being good stewards of our planet and our community as well. With regard to the liquor license, we have a tremendous amount of community support. We don't intend to do that much with it. The Inseason, by the way, is the only kosher restaurant, certified kosher restaurant, in the city of Royal Oak. Travelocity rates us number four out of 194 restaurants in Royal Oak. We also win numerous awards for best vegan and best vegetarian dining. And you can see some of these awards, which I've given you. We have a strong gluten-free menu, and we have a tremendous relationship with farm-to-fork dining. You know, the Inseason is only three or four blocks, and we've heard a lot about the Royal Oak Farmer's Market. The Royal Oak Farmer's Market was an integral part of the Inseason Cafe because we... Our original mission was a macrobiotic philosophy, which means eat the food that's grown in your environment. So obviously, we have a tremendous abundance of agriculture here in the state of Michigan. We're actually the fourth-largest agriculture producer in the state, and some of these wonderful farmers, you know, started coming to the markets. And so we would get our food from the local market, and, you know, that became really kind of a competitive product offering that nobody else had. So we developed all these relationships with farmers, and we now have 25 to 27 farmers that supply us with artisanal, organic produce, cheeses, other, you know, products, and we're proud of that. With regard to the liquor license, a lot of confusion about that. I think the state... I think the mayor, you might want to write a little letter to Michigan, Laura, and explain to them that no point in giving out these licenses, you know, and putting us in a non-compliant situation with a local ordinance. That just doesn't make any sense. So we're trying to resolve all those issues right now. In our little handout here, you see our beverage menu, which includes beer, hard ciders, and gluten-free beers, and kombucha beer, which is a specialty product that our customers like. It also includes a wine list, which is... Only has approximately seven or eight wines. This is the sum total of our liquor storage. One cabinet for beer, one cabinet for wine. If it doesn't fit in here, we can't sell it, and we're not going to sell it. And the minor amount of alcohol we're going to sell is exemplified by these two coolers, one of which is our wine cooler and one of which is our beer cooler. So this is all we're going to be able to sell at the Inseason because of our footprint, and we're not going to be expanding it. And our customers really are not desiring it, but there is a certain component that does, and in order to remain competitive in the current business climate, it's kind of a requirement to have that kind of product offering. We're committed to resolving any issues. 502, which is the concern, apparently was not permitted 20 years ago when they started using it to store food. I think it's licensed for offices and storage. It has our offices in there for me, the chef, and the general manager, and it also... We take deliveries in there so we can... Because we don't have room inside the kitchen. It is not used by the public. We don't allow the public in there. It's only used by myself and a few of the employees. It's also chartered by the state as a off-premises liquor storage, so to complement, you know, the 500 East Fourth Street. Do you guys have any questions?
Questions, if anyone have for Mr. Raftus about his intentions and plans. Mr. Polton.
You said you've used this 502 East Fourth Street for a period of time. I think you mentioned 20 years. As for an off-site storage in this other office.
When I purchased it, it was configured the exact same way it is now. It was used for storage. It's not all food storage. It's just general storage and offices. It's just general storage and offices. I think, it appears that probably twenty years ago is when they converted it into that usage.
So, for twenty years, you've been, it's been, been used like that?
Yes.
And the problem is now, because you've made a request for a liquor license, now they're, you know, violates the zoning ordinance?
Apparently so. I, this is something I've just been, every forty-eight hours, I discover something new.
And you want to serve, because, I mean, you operate here, In-Season Cafe, but because you know you want to serve alcohol, now there's multiple planning and building department issues? I mean, do they?
Well, 502 was built in the forties.
Right.
And so, it has a footprint, and it's grandfathered in, apparently. I mean, I mean, 500, the In-Season Cafe. 502 was built in the seventies, which is kind of odd that 502 is the problem, because I thought that was the one that was more compliant with any codes. So, I'm just now, I've hired Jim Schneider, architect, to do all the code compliance evaluations. Having a survey taken this week, so that we can get started on resolving any issues, and we're committed to being good corporate citizens.
So, they've, our staff has indicated to you what issues there are, and it sounds like you've taken steps to deal with those issues, correct?
Well, you know, there's probably, as you review the codes, and then you review your building, you know, some of these things are easily accomplished. For example, the roof sign. You can't have a sign on a roof, so it's easy to take that off. Other things, like the dumpster in the alley being enclosed, which is part of compliance with the ordinances, and other factors like that are a little more, have to be negotiated, really, because the footprint doesn't allow some things to happen.
Okay. So, it's on, so you're taking steps to deal with it, and you're going to try to negotiate some of these other items, but it really shouldn't impact whether, I mean, whether or not you'll be able to serve alcohol?
With all the issues with 502, nothing's with 500.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Dubois.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I, I don't know how necessary it was, given that, I'd be really surprised if anyone up here hasn't been to In-Season, or understands that it's kind of a landmark Royal Oak establishment, which as Commissioner Polton pointed out, you've been running effectively for a long time, and now we've, there's some technicalities that have come up as a result of this liquor license transfer. So, you're working good faith to get it addressed. Do you have any idea what kind of time horizon you're looking at?
It's my understanding, it could take several months, six months, maybe.
Now, if it were, and you'll have to ask the city attorney, if we could grant the transfers, that you could begin operating immediately with, with your license contingent on everything being settled, say, within ten months? Otherwise, the license would, at that time, be suspended, which I got to find out if we can actually do. Is, is that something that, that you would think is, is fair?
Yeah, I agree with that. You know, we want to be, you know, we've been involved in the community for thirty-six and a half years. We're not going to go away.
Right.
And, you know, we want to keep it viable business, a viable, sustainable business, both, you know, planetary sustainable and financially sustainable, and that's what our goal is.
Understood. I mean, if this was a question of public health or safety, obviously, you know, we'd, we'd have to, I think, really be more stringent about it, but if this is, you know, a matter of just becoming compliant with things, I mean...
Well, I should tell you, the Health Department of Oakland County inspects it every six months. It's not like it's been, not been inspected. And I also have a huge, like, ten years ago, almost to the day, I discussed with Marty Sterling and Murphy, the usage of 502, the usage of 500, maybe combining them together, and she took it through their administrative meeting. So, to hear that it's not, you know, permitted is kind of odd to me, since, you know, it's been used for twenty years, and planning knows about it, so I guess we'll just have to get, we're busy working on it.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Raftis? Okay, thank you, Mr. Raftis.
Thank you, Lieutenant Moore. Thank you very much.
All right. I think at this point, we'll open up the public hearing. Same rules apply as for public comment. You have five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone here to speak at tonight's public comment? Yes, sir, or a public hearing?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Simon?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. My name is David Brenner, 504 East Fourth Street, born and raised in Royal Oak, proud graduate of Royal Oak Shrine, and I reside next to In-Season. So, first off, Nick has been a fantastic neighbor. His manager, Thomas, fantastic neighbor, but over the years, there's been some issues that I think are pretty readily resolvable. We've talked about parking. There's a lot of traffic in the alleyway and on the streets. We're fortunate that there's no meters down there, but at least the building out today, and my tenants are always complaining about the traffic in front of the building. Secondly, there is an alleyway. The driveway going into the alleyway does not align with the alleyway, and the alleyway gets a lot of traffic from the restaurant. So, the alleyway always gets beat up. I'm calling the city of Royal Oak to have them grade it, because they own the alleyway, and to trim the trees from the houses behind. It's not easily done. It's not done in a quick manner, so it's disappointing, and the alleyway continues to get beat up, has chuckles, gets water, gets ice, et cetera. The biggest issue, and really why I'm here, again, I, I respect the In-Season, fantastic restaurant, love going there, but we, we have a infestation of rats, and it is now in my building. I've owned the building since 2004, and I believe that with increased traffic, increased customers, the storage unit, which is right next to my building, the non-enclosure of the dumpster, I think there is a health problem. I have had, for the last four to five months, people at my building trying to rid the, the rodents, and I've been unsuccessful. You can hear them in the wall between my building and the storage. They are now in the ceilings, and I have a tenant that is about to escape the lease because of some of the issues that I'm dealing with. This is not a Nick problem. This is some of what I think the storage and, and the In-Season, and some of the non-enclosure of the dumpster has created over the years. So, I, I'm not here to do anything to, to, you know, disenfranchise In-Season. Great establishment, great restaurant, great food, great reputation, but being the neighbor, and being some of the stuff that's going on or not going on, I'm concerned. So, I just wanted to bring this to your attention. Again, this really, frankly, I, I'm not sure a liquor license, transfer of liquor license has anything to do with this or not, but it's, it's getting worse and worse, and as the owner of the building for the last thirteen years, it continues to get worse. So, I am concerned with some of the things that I don't want you gleaning over in this approval, and not making sure that certain ramifications are, and provisions are, are taken care of, like every other restaurant in Royal Oak. It is a tight area. We both live under tight quarters. There's not a lot of parking. A lot of the customers take my clients' parking in back, but, you know, want the restaurant to survive, flourish, but just need some problems taken care of. So, that's all I have. I thank you for your time and attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here? Yes, sir.
I've been in this very chamber about eighteen, seventeen years ago, when the initial application for beer and wine license was submitted by In-Season Cafe. And I was a little surprised that it was turned down back then. It's a, it's a nice restaurant. We don't have rowdy troublemakers like some of the bars downtown that itching to get into a fight and, and draw our police department's resources into those areas. So, from that standpoint, there is no problem, but there is another side here, other couple of set of problems, a couple of sets of problems, and that, and you may ignore what I have to say right now, or may, you may even take that into consideration. But one of the problems is the parking, of course, and there is a new building being constructed right now, right across the street, on Knowles and Fourth Street, and I think that building is going to bring a lot of new customers or clients. Additional parking will be required. Now, currently, and I watch this all the time, because I drive by, a lot of customers from In-Season Cafe, they park in the neighborhoods, and I know that some of the neighbors express that to me, that they are not happy about that arrangement, because they get home and, you know, they have a difficulty finding parking, or their visitors, for example. So, that's, that's one of the concerns, and alcohol sales will undoubtedly bring more customers to In-Season. And I'm not against more customers at In-Season, but somehow, we need to deal with the parking situation. Number two, on Knowles, on the side of In-Season building, right by the alley, there are signs, or a sign, says no parking. When In-Season have deliveries of semi-trucks that cut through the neighborhoods in order to get to, to In-Season, and park on Knowles, right where no parking sign is at, that creates a battle, a bottleneck that squeezes the traffic into one single lane, and even that is too narrow. So, perhaps that issue could be dealt with by designating a parking spot for semis on Fourth Street in front of the restaurant, whereby the semis could come and safely park there and not impede traffic on Knowles. So, when you're considering granting that request, I think that needs to be taken into consideration, and that's a very serious couple of matters. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Anybody else here to speak at tonight's public hearing? Mr. Wolf.
Ron Wolf, 333 North Troy. I haven't eaten at In-Season for about five years. The prices have gone up, but I love the place. When I used to frequent it, it was fantastic. It was, the only thing I was, I, I used to like better than In-Season was the Yom Cafe in, in Fernhill, but it's a great place to take a date, or just, or to take your, your wife or your significant other, too, and, and really enjoy a good meal. I think the small amount of alcohol is not going to make any difference, but I would suggest the commission maybe use this opportunity to try to see how they can address the complaints, maybe allow the trucks to double park on Fourth, is it? Fourth? And when they, when they unload, if they were given, let's say, given us twenty minutes to do it, if they can get in and out within fifteen, twenty minutes, allow them to double park. As far as parking goes, I suggest the In-Season look into valet parking, possibly talk the CVS Pharmacy people into allowing some valet parking after CVS hours, you know, after, I mean, that, after all the stores close across the street. I think it'd be interesting if, if they would look into valet parking. And as I say, I would just like to see the commission take this opportunity to use its leverage to correct some of the problems, including the garbage problem, which I don't think the owner really wants to hear about rats. I've never seen any rats around In-Season, but I, I'm sure they're everywhere in Royal Oak. And one other thing, it's not that, it's not that they're going to have rock and roll bands blasting music that's going to carry a mile away. We've gotten a lot of complaints on the, on Royal Oak next door about that recently, and this is a marvelous place. I think it's probably one of the finest restaurants in Royal Oak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Okay, Mr. Weyron.
When I was a kid, it was called the Family Restaurant, and I was there for a long time. Then there was an Indian restaurant, then it became In-Season, and it's been that way for, what, thirty years, something like that? I think they're a wonderful place. I haven't been there for a long time, because I can't afford them, but they, I, I think you should grant this license, because it's really not going to make any difference in their operation. As the owner said, they're not expanding, so you really can't say it's going to get worse. It's going to be the same. Now, the same is not necessarily good. Parking during the day goes from Knowles down to Kaiser, and sort of cuts off there. Sometimes it fills into the, the parking lot of the median. I think maybe the city should think about expanding that, because, well, you keep building buildings. There's one across the street that hasn't been built, that was going to be next to the, what is it, the Canadian Legion? There, there is one that is building, and the developer was smart enough to put some parking for his tenants, but there's still going to be people who will be taking spaces that weren't, that simply weren't there before, weren't needed before. The city has this policy of, well, if we can avoid having parking problems, or talking about parking problems, we won't. So, it's, it was expand, the DDA district was expanded down there, so the new building that's contributing to parking problems was just simply brushed off. There is one that's approved and not, and hasn't been built between Knowles and Kaiser, and I think that, you know, that's going to contribute to the problem, and I really think that you ought to do some consideration, as I said, expanding the median. In the meantime, since I, I go that way all the time, and I imagine you do, too, because you live in the area, if you want to go into, uh, to Knowles, the parking is allowed next to the new building, and that makes the, the street too narrow. That, that should become a no parking spot right away, so that the street remains wider. And other than that, there's really nothing you can do unless you start giving out permits for the people on Fifth Street. So, it's, it's a problem, but I, I think it's a fixable problem, and I would recommend giving the, the owner his liquor license. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weyron. Anybody else here tonight to speak at the hearing?
Can I answer a couple of questions?
We'll, we'll close out the hearing first, Mr. Raftis, and we'll, we'll bring you up for, for questions. Okay, with nobody, I'm going to close the public hearing. We're going to bring the meeting back up to here. I'll permit Mr. Raftis. I know you had a, one or two more comments, so if you'd like to approach the podium.
With regard to parking, you know, parking in that area's always been a concern. One side of the street of Fourth, well, of course, it used to be two lanes, and then we expanded the curb and took out part of the lane and made a bike lane, so it's only one lane right now. I don't feel that having a semi-truck park in Fourth is going to not obstruct traffic, because they're usually there for ten minutes while they unload. Secondly, on the north side of Fourth, there's no restrictions to parking, so you can park there all day long, pretty much all night long. While on the other side of the street, you have a limited two-hour parking. So, if you want to affect a parking solution, one of the easiest ways would just be to put two-hour parking on the other side of the street. That would open up a tremendous amount of parking, because it appears that the people that go to the Oraveta School, I think they park there in the morning, and then they just walk down like three or four blocks, and they occupy those spaces all day long. So, that's one easy fix. With regard to the rat- Um, with regard to the rats, okay, we do not have a rodent problem. Uh, and I will work with Dave because obviously I don't wanna have a rodent problem, we're a health food restaurant, and so that obviously is not acceptable to me or anybody else. If we move the dumpster to an enclosure, it's gonna be closer to 504, not as far away. It, it would probably sit in the vicinity of 502. So if we relocate the dumpster to an enclosure, unless we put it in the alley, it's gonna be closer to Dave's building. So I'm not sure that's gonna be a solution. At one time, when the house behind us was a rooming house and then the owner died, there was a mouse infestation in their garage, and we couldn't figure out what was going on with that. But eventually, when the new owners moved in, uh, they mitigated that problem, so we don't have any issues. That was probably ten years ago. Um, I think, what other issues were brought up? I can't recall. All right, so I think that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raftus. Okay. Well, we've opened and closed the public hearing. We had...
You know, we did serve alcohol for five weeks, and um it's basically, it doesn't impact our turnover times, and we, we have, we haven't expanded the seating, so I don't, uh, basically what happens is somebody has a beer or glass of wine with their meal, and then it's the same, like, basically they stay an hour. Um, I don't see that expanding, and I don't see any expansion of business in the sense of more people coming, because already we have a line, you know what I mean?
Thank you, Mr. Raftus. Commissioner Douglas?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to ask Lieutenant Mora a question. Uh, your report says that um there are multiple planning and building department issues that must be addressed before the business can lawfully begin serving alcohol. I mean, really, those have to be addressed before, anyway. I mean, how, how are, are those resolutions attached to the alcohol service?
I don't wanna speak out of turn here, but it's my understanding that when you add the liquor license, it, it changes the designation of the property to a special land use, which changes the code and other things. So it's going from a restaurant without a liquor license to a liquor license, so it changes what codes are in effect.
Building codes or land or zoning?
Uh, both, I believe.
I mean, because the, I mean, if, if the property next door is already being used for a purpose for which it's not zoned, I mean, they're gonna have to resolve that anyway, right?
Yes.
Um, irrespective of alcohol service. I mean, these are problems they have to address, no matter what.
Yes.
So, uh, okay, thanks.
Commissioner Dubb.
So, yeah, I mean, I understand, there's parking pinch around there, but I don't see uh the transferring of this license dramatically increasing that problem. I think that's part of a, a larger conversation, and I'm not going to, I don't think it'd be right to hold uh this transfer hostage uh to, to have that conversation. Um, I think that the, the zoning and the um code issues uh need to be addressed, and, and that's why I'm curious if Mr. Gillum can tell me, can we approve the transfer on condition that these are addressed within a certain time period, or else they lose the ability to serve?
Well, first of all, the issue isn't the transfer. The transfer is a state issue, and the state has approved the transfer, so the license is already um in this gentleman's hands. The issue is that both state law and local ordinance require compliance with all state laws and local ordinances in order to use the liquor license. So the city commission could, in theory, approve the plan of operation, which is one of the requirements of local ordinance with conditions. But I'm, I'm gonna kind of look to Lieutenant Mora here, too, but my thinking on this is that um even if the commission grants conditional approval of the plan of operation, because there are still outstanding planning, building, and zoning violations, that is a violation of local ordinance, which is a violation of state law. So I think all the violations have to get addressed in order for the business to be able to operate lawfully under state law. And if they're not all addressed while liquor is being served, the, they're, they're doing so at their own risk, and they're potentially looking at a violation from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission.
That's my interpretation also.
Okay, so that limits our flexibility here.
We have the authority to go ahead and approve the plan of operation with conditions, but the other issues still have to get, to get addressed in order to be in compliance with state law.
Which is beyond our authority.
Right, we have no authority to, to grant any kind of waivers for any of the requirements of state law.
Okay, that would be between Mr. Raftus and the state.
Right.
We could conditionally approve it, though, and, you know, pending resolution to those things that he needs to get done, and if he doesn't get them done, then he's in violation with the state. If he doesn't get them done, then he's not, right?
Correct.
So our approval, then, would basically allow him to, to begin serving once he's resolved those issues?
Correct.
As opposed to having to come back before us again?
He wouldn't have to come back, exactly.
Okay.
Commissioner Douglas?
So would a, and, 'cause I'm prepared to make a motion here, would a, a motion which uh grants, which approves the plan of operation contingent on the business satisfying the requirements of our building and planning departments, um, is that a sufficient enough statement in order to um make a valid motion? How far do we have to go with that?
Or do we have to at all if it's up to the state?
Well, we still need to approve their plan of operation.
Right, that's correct, yeah, so...
Um, so, but it would, it just, their ability to serve would be contingent on meeting all of the local requirements. And is that too vague? Do we need to be more specific?
No, I think a motion to approve the plan of operation contingent upon or conditioned upon compliance with all applicable ordinance requirements would be sufficient.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, we have support by Commissioner Marley. Discussion? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I remember when this was in, in front of the city commission, I don't know, ten, twelve years ago, maybe, um, and, and I was kind of lightly following it in the, the local media, um, 'cause I figured it was a shoo-in, and I was absolutely astonished that the city commission didn't grant, I think they may, they had been going through a bistro, for a bistro license at that point, but I was just astonished that the city commission wouldn't approve a beer and wine license for this establishment, which brings so much um attention and so many people to our city, um, and is, I mean, such a worthy operation. Um, and I remember being frustrated about it at the time, and I'm delighted to be in a position to rectify that tonight.
Commissioner Donigan?
Thank you, and I was on the city commission back then, and I think it, although I can't see it in the minutes because those minutes aren't on the website yet, I think it was my last meeting or my second-to-last meeting. Um, and I think I might have been the only one on the commission who voted yes at the time, but I was delighted to do so, it seemed like a no-brainer to me, too, so um I'm happy to do that again tonight.
Any other discussion? Mr. Polton?
Yeah, this is um a simple approval for me. It sounds as though you're taking steps to deal with some of the issues. I just don't want any heavy-handedness from the um uh planning and building department, which prevents you from getting a liquor license, which you have needed for quite some time. I mean, you made the request many years ago, at that time, they were saying no to anything, everything, including that one time they even said no to Lockhart's because it was a dangerous place. So I think there was some uh backwards thinking, not uh positive, moving the city forward thinking like we see now, so um it's about time you get your license and look forward to going there and enjoying, enjoying the evening.
Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna keep it up here, Mr. Raftus, right now, thanks. Anybody else? I'll just add that, you know, without a doubt, the Inseason Cafe is a landmark in this community, and um, you know, a point of pride, not just for our neighborhood in the south part of town, but I think for all of Royal Oak and even the region. Um, the food is amazing, the owner runs a very competent business, focused on helping people, um, and, uh, and, and making sure that, you know, there's a good quality food product out there for, for people's, uh, to eat um in, in a healthful way. Clearly, I mean, I'll support um, you know, the plan of operation. I don't see any impact to additional customers coming in, I think it's a substitution. They're gonna drink water, they're gonna drink uh organic um apple juice, or they might get an organic cider instead. Um, I guess the thing that is always challenging is the preemptive relationship that the state has with the city as it relates to some of these ordinances, et cetera, that need to be complied to in order to, you know, um, be in compliance with the state, and I don't know of a workaround right now after hearing uh the city attorney's opinion. What I can say is, and I'll agree with Commissioner Polton, I hope that there isn't any heavy-handedness. I think that property, I've seen it myself, there's some things that are very unique to it that need to be addressed in a unique way. Um, I also agree, you know, it's been operating for many, many, many years, decades, uh, in a way um that has proven to be successful, you know, it's passed its health code violations, there are no save, uh, safety concerns related to, you know, the plan of operation. But there are some things out there that, you know, we need to work and use some discretion with to make sure that, you know, the Inseason Cafe is compliant to our ordinances, but in a way that makes sense for that operation, given the fact that, you know, it is a unique footprint. Um, I mean, notwithstanding the only better, uh, I think, alternative that Commissioner Dubbuck brought up, which sounds like it's not possible, um, according to Mr. Gillum, is, you know, allow them to um operate um while they're getting these things fixed, but that's a technical issue with the state, not with the city. Um, and so it would be hard for us to make that motion, and that would be noncompliant with the state license requirement, so. But I think overall, Mr. Raftus is a good operator. I talked to him, I know he's committed to taking care of these issues. They're not bad issues, they're not health issues, they're not security issues, quite frankly, their laws change over decades, and, you know, we talk about the sign on top, nobody, I, I've never received a complaint about the sign on top of the Inseason Cafe. Uh, but technically, you know, we updated our sign ordinance, it's, and it's not compliant, but, you know, there are remedies to everything, so um I'm gonna be supporting it, it's not the ideal situation. I think, you know, Mr. Raftus and Inseason Cafe should be able to serve a beer with the plan of operation as it is, but clearly there's a conflict with the state licensing um bureau, and um, you know, that's gonna be a challenge to, to overcome, this body can't overcome that. Um, it's unfortunate. We're gonna keep it up here, Mr. Raftus, sorry. Um, so with that, we have a motion on the table, and it's to um approve the plan of operation, conditional on some of these issues being remedied, and I'm gonna call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Raftus. You have an approved plan of operation, but um, you know, let's, let's keep in close contact, let's make sure, you know, we do what we can do to assist you as a good steward of the community and make sure, um, you know, we can get compliance in a reasonable way to some of these outstanding um...
Sixteen years ago?
Ordinance issues. Of no fault of Inseason Cafes, I might add. So, okay. Next item on the agenda. Somebody steal my agenda? There it is, perfect. Item number nine, approval of September two thousand seventeen Traffic Committee Resolutions. Mr. Callahan?
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, September Traffic Committee was held on September nineteenth. Uh, Dan Godak couldn't be here this evening to answer any questions, so I'm here to answer the questions that you might have. Uh, we had two items on our agenda for that evening. The first item was proposed permit parking zone on Vincetta between the alley east of Woodward and Lawndale Drive. And the second item on the agenda was the recommendation to move forward with the north-south bike route as um preliminarily designed by the engineering department.
Questions for Mr. Callahan? Mr. Dubbuck?
Thank you, Mayor. Just curious if, was the, uh, for the permit parking on Vincetta, was the business owner that's generating all the parking traffic engaged at all in the conversation?
Um, the owner of Cruze and Mirror has come into our department and talked with us on several occasions. We have relayed to him that we had a petition that we had sent out, and we'd be expecting it back soon, and, and he kind of indicated to us that whatever happens will happen. We notified him of the traffic committee meeting, or we notified the owners of the restaurant of the traffic committee meeting, nobody came from the restaurant to that meeting to talk. So as far as engagement, that's, is, that's what we've had so far.
Okay.
Um, the reason why we have permit parking on Vincetta proposed from the alley east of Woodward to Lawndale Drive is because we don't typically put permit parking next to a business, so that on-street parking that is allowed there still gets to remain. So both on the north side of Vincetta next to the restaurant, and on the south side of the opposite boulevard next to the business that's on the corner of Catalpa, there is some parking there adjacent to those businesses. Not a lot, but some.
Understood. And, uh, sorry, my letter went away. Do you, I think it said like eighty-three percent support on the, the street?
Yeah, more than eighty percent, and we had a person come to the traffic committee meeting who did not sign the petition, who also said they were in support of that, but at that time, it would have pushed it over ninety percent.
And no vocal opposition from anyone on the street?
Um, there was one person on the street who lived further down north of Lawndale, who indicated that they were concerned that traffic would just be shifted down into their block, or, sorry, parking would be shifted into their block.
And that's, you know, something I think we discuss whenever we look at doing uh permit parking on streets, are we just gonna shift the problem to someone else's street? Um, which is why I was curious if the business owner had been engaged at all and could help and dissuade that, make sure that they're meeting the needs of their business without just pushing it another block down. Um, so they, but they said they're gonna work with it, no...
That was our indication from, the only indication we got from them is that whatever happens, happens, they'll, they'll figure out something. There's public parking allowed on Woodward Avenue in the businesses to the north, there's public parking on Basset next to another business, um, that's in the right of way, so it's public parking. Can't be guaranteed parking for any of the businesses. So there's, there's parking out there, and there's parking in the lot of the restaurant, it's just, that's how the restaurant wants to operate.
Gotcha.
Mr. Marley?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Callahan, can you go through some of the details of the uh proposed north-south bike route?
Yes, I can. Uh, the north-south bike route is on Washington, Euclid, and North Main Street. On Washington, it runs from Woodward to Euclid, which is uh one block north of Crooks, um, cuts over on uh Euclid over to Main Street and continues on up to the city's north border. We struggled with a lot of the issues that are out there on the Washington route mostly, um, angle parking in the downtown, uh, on-street parking north of Eleven Mile Road all the way up to Crooks. Um, we looked at numerous different options of widening the road, the cost of widening the road, the removal of trees to widen the road to get on-street bike lanes, to get on-street bike lanes and parking, and um the final plan, and I'll move through it in logical order if I can, on Washington between Woodward and Lincoln, the proposal is to have on-street bike lanes. On Lincoln, where the angle parking starts through the downtown, the whole lane will be dedicated, uh, bikes and cars, not just necessarily one-wheel path with charos. The, the signage on that route will be, bikes can use the whole lane. And that will be all the way up from Lincoln through the downtown, north of Eleven Mile Road, all the way to, to Euclid. One of the reasons why we thought that that was one of the options we should explore is because when we did the training wheels, the people that ran that, and we rode that route, just indicated to us that it was such an easy ride with the volume of traffic, they didn't feel like, because they were down to one lane, they weren't dealing with lots of driveways, lots of turning movements, that it was a viable option to explore, and that's the option we chose. Euclid Avenue... Euclid Avenue, where we turn and go towards Main Street, is a residential street, and there's parking allowed on one side right now, and we're going to keep it that way. We're still allowing some on-street parking. Once we get to Main Street, there'll be a traffic signal proposed that's in the proposal to build a new traffic signal there, which will be bike-actuated, so that cyclists can make the left turn to go north. It should be, it'll be a lesser costly traffic signal because there's a cemetery on the other side of the road, so it won't be a four-way intersection, it's a T-intersection. And from that point on Main Street, it will be bike lanes and a road diet all the way up to this north-city border. We're still working on Clausen, we haven't gotten their comments back about how they want to continue it, if they want to continue it onto their city. They're open to the idea, to the point where they have already done a road diet. They don't have room for on-street bike lanes where that starts, but that's, they are open to the idea, and they have building support in their city from residents. Along the route, there are brand-new pedestrian crossing islands in the middle of the road, where we have minimal turning movements, so there'll be a raised concrete island where pedestrians can cross and not have to worry about crossing four lanes of traffic that don't stop, but being able to cross one lane of traffic to a safety island in the middle of the road before they continue on to the other side. It's very prominent, you're seeing it now on many traffic calming plans. So on Main Street, I believe, we have five of those, and on Washington, we have two more.
Can you talk a little bit about the connection at Woodward? The slight redesign of the intersection there and connection potentially, possibly in the future, to the zoo?
Well, I know more than you do at this point, because there's a developer building a development down there on the lot, south of Tiffany Lane, that we use for snow storage, and the zoo has been using for parking. So they have come forward and agreed to rebuild that boulevard entrance off of Woodward that functions as the entryway of Washington. We're going to be eliminating the drop lane, so that it's almost like a hard-right turn onto Washington, which is going to slow a lot of traffic down. And from what we know about road diets is that the road diets cause a lot of traffic calming, they make cars drive slower. The developer's going to be rebuilding this into a new intersection. We've got bike lanes, which allowed us to put the bike lanes right up to Woodward Avenue, and we are working with MDOT to span the bridge over to the opposite side by the zoo. What that exactly looks like yet, we're not sure, but we're moving forward with that. So at least the portion that's in our city, that's on Washington, will be complete, and we'll continue to enhance our on-street bike lanes, and on this particular route, if things aren't working, we'll look at other options and bring them up later on.
And the subcommittee that voted this, this was members of the commission, members of the Traffic Committee, and I know the answer to this, but it passed the subcommittee unanimously?
Yes.
And it passed the Traffic Committee unanimously?
Yes, it did.
Okay. All right. Mayor, I'll move the resolutions.
Both resolutions?
Yes.
We have a motion by Commissioner Marley, is there support? Supported by Commissioner Polton.
May I continue?
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll say I'm really excited about this. Well, first, to be able to help residents experiencing issues with a sudden increase in traffic in front of their homes on Vincetta, but I'm really, really excited about the bike lanes, that Mr. Callahan will be, begin being constructed next summer.
That is the current plan, if it passes this evening?
If it passes this evening. You know, one of our goals for a long time has been the construction of a major north-south bike route. And I will say that I don't think this plan is perfect. Personally, I would have liked to see some changes to the parking on Washington, whether that was returning to parallel parking or reverse angle parking. But this is a really great next step in the right direction towards making our city safer for people to get around. So I'm thrilled to support this. This had the support of, I'm liking these new tag names, members of both the opposition slate and the optimism slate. So I, it's been a many months of hard work. Thank you to Mr. Callahan and his team, pulling in MDOT into this, learning from some of the experts, even though I sometimes disagree with MDOT's expertise. I'm really looking forward to this, and this is a major, this is going to be a major upgrade to our pedestrian and bicycle facilities coming next year, and make it a heck of a lot easier for people like me to get around town on a bicycle, so I'm really looking forward to it.
Thank you, Mr. Marley. Anybody else? I'll just add two important things here. One, I mean, clearly, we've been working on a north-south bike lane for a while. This is based on feedback we've received from the community in several different forums. This is a very open, transparent process. We had community engagement from cyclists, we had MDOT involved, we had the, our city engineer and his department embrace this concept, and I think we have a really good result here. I understand Commissioner Marley's comments, it's not perfect, but, you know, rarely anything is, including all the commissioners up here. But I think it's a good start here to make sure that, you know, we're beginning to look at, you know, serving the demands that people have in our community, and this is one of the things, I can tell you, when we put the bike path on Fourth Street, the bike route, I mean, I live in that area, I mean, it's, especially in the summertime, you can count dozens and dozens of bikes going by throughout the evening. I mean, it's really highly trafficked, and it can certainly help with a lot of issues in the community. As it relates to the Vincetta alley, you know, the parking situation on the street, totally empathize with the neighbors and, you know, what they're enduring. I think there's a difference between having parking, like on my street where people park in the street, we have a few homes that have multiple residents, and it's a pain, but, you know, it's not sustained from 8:00 AM to, you know, 11 o'clock at night, midnight, et cetera, and some of the other things that come with it. So I think this is good. I do worry a little bit that whenever we do these sort of permitting's, that it's going to shift parking around to another area. We've seen this before. My feeling is Vincetta, this area is a little different. We have one business that is the, you know, creating this increased demand for parking, so I'm hopeful that we're not going to have any of the other squeeze-the-balloon issues, so to speak, like we see sometimes in other areas of the community where I've had issue with issuing permit parking. But I think this is a much different situation, so I'm very happy to support it, and, you know, continue to work it if it continues to be an issue. So, you know, you got to try something, and if it works, great, if it doesn't, well, we'll come back to the drawing board and try something different. So notwithstanding any further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Okay, very good. This brings us to item number 10, snow removal ordinance, first reading.
Mayor, Fortunian City Commissioners, I think the letter that I prepared for you did on October 16th fairly well describes the background. I recognize that one of the commission's objectives for the year is to investigate options for a snow removal ordinance. In doing that work, I discovered that approximately a year ago, before I came back to work for the city again, the commission, in fact, directed staff to prepare an ordinance that involved the combined clearance model, which is a combination of city and/or private removal based upon priorities that are set depending upon traffic in the area, the amount of pedestrian traffic and things like that, so. Whereas the ordinance that I had been working on is under the alternative model, which is the private clearance model, which is a little more simpler concept in the sense that you require adjacent property owners and/or occupants to clear the snow from the sidewalks and the curb ramps adjacent to their property. So really, this is either an action item or an update, depending upon what the commission's intentions are tonight. If the commission would still like the staff to move forward with an ordinance that involves the combined clearance model, we can certainly do that, but it's going to take some time, and we're not going to be in a position to have that ordinance in place before the snow starts flying this year. I wish I could give you a different answer, but that's just the reality. So the other alternative is if, let me back up for a second, if you're comfortable with that, if you're comfortable knowing at this point in time that we will be moving forward and bringing something back to you as reasonably soon as we can, then there would be no action that you would need to take tonight. On the other hand, if in the interim, you feel a need to have something in place, and I have drafted, completed the draft, actually, of an ordinance that involves the private clearance model, that is, again, property owners and/or occupants would be required to clear the snow from the sidewalks and the curb ramps that are adjacent to their property. To try to address some of the comments that were made during public comment, in terms of the 24 hours, that's by no means written in stone, but a number of the ordinances that I looked at just talked about snow having to be cleared when snow stops falling. Well, to me, that's as clear as mud, so I think we need to have some kind of a timeframe. And what would be a reasonable timeframe? If you think additional time is needed, we can certainly incorporate that into the ordinance. Part of that is may, is probably a function of the depth of the snowfall, and the four inches that is contained in the draft that I did for you, that's based upon a distinction that was drawn in some of the reports that staff had previously prepared for the commission, based upon the frequency and the number of snowfall events that would be at issue. But again, the four inches isn't written in stone either, so. In terms of the penalties, the penalties had proposed, these would be civil infractions, so there would be no possible criminal penalties, but the proposed fines of $100 for a first violation, plus any costs if the city actually had to come out and do the work itself, or for a repeat violation within six months, that is, in theory, within the same winter season, the fine would be $250, again, plus the cost, if the city had to come out and remove snow and/or ice for the homeowner. Again, those figures are based upon the research that was done by the staff previously, and the research that the staff had done indicated, based upon the ordinances that were adopted in other communities across the country, that in order to, for an ordinance like this to be anywhere near effective, the minimum fine had to be at least $100 to catch people's attention. If it was less than that, then people just saw the fines as more or less the cost of homeownership, and they didn't worry about it. So again, those dollar figures aren't written in stone, they could be modified if you feel it's appropriate to do that. Again, my intention here was to get some ideas out there. If you want to move forward with this, if we need to make some changes, we can make those. On the other hand, if you'd rather wait and see a draft of a combined clearance model, you don't have to take any action. I suppose the other option you have now would be to move forward with this ordinance. At this time, we can continue to work on the combined clearance model, bring that back at some point in the future, and you can decide whether or not this ordinance has been effective in the meantime, if we should stay on the books, or if we should move forward and try the combined clearance model. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer.
Questions for Mr. Gillum. Mr. Marley?
So I know an ordinance is different from a charter amendment, but in our recent, most of our recent charter amendments that have been approved by the voters, a lot of them have been efforts to remove hard numbers from the charter. Is there, is it possible to do that with an ordinance like this, where the, we could draft it in a way that the commission, whatever commission at the time, could set the policy? So the commission, you know, within, the commission policy could say within 72 hours, you know, for all of these hard numbers that you have here, the timeframe, the accumulation amounts, and the fine as well?
I don't think you can, no. I think there's a problem with notice and due process. If you're going to be potentially ticketing somebody, and they're going to be responsible for the payment of penalties and fines, they're going to need to know in advance, well in advance, what the, what standards are going to be held to, so.
Okay, so even if it was something that the commission adopted annually?
Just change the ordinance.
Yeah, I don't think that would work, because you've got issues with publication and things like that, so.
All right.
I mean, if it's an ordinance that would need to be reviewed and amended annually, we could do that, but.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dubbuck?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm in the camp of update. Last time we discussed this, I think that, you know, we're kind of all at different places with how exactly we want to address this. I'm relatively confident we all agree that, you know, we need a walkable city every day of the year. I guess before going with, you know, what feels a little bit more heavy-handed, you know, I would like to know the, how the communities we're modeling after are feeling like their success rate is with this. Are they just writing a lot of fines, or are they finding that their sidewalks are clear? Or are they having to send out DPS to clear sidewalks and then bill people? Are we achieving our goal of making sure the sidewalks are clear? And I know one of the other conversations that we had had is, can we start this, and maybe this was in the combined model that you mentioned, by looking at zoning and starting off by areas that are, you know, heavier trafficked, and looking at zoning law and then pairing clearing law, the law to clear, with those higher-traffic areas where people have to access public transit, have to access commerce, and seeing if we have some success with that, compared with, I thought we had talked about a public awareness campaign, about the importance of clearing sidewalks, so that, you know, people with disabilities can get out in the community, and kids can walk to school, and, you know, folks can exercise safely. As far as what's in front of us, I'm concerned with the 24-hour turnaround time. I agree, it can't be when the snow stops falling, but I think that can present some really serious enforcement trouble for anyone that leaves town for the weekend, if we have a heavy snowfall on a Friday night. And I agree that the fine, if you're going to do it, should achieve its desired goal, but $100 for the first violation still feels high to me. So I'd like to, I'd like to keep working on this, and I'm okay if we're not ready to go with something this season, because if, and I also know you've got a lot of other things cooking, so this isn't, I don't think this needs to be a top priority, but I think it is an issue we have to address, but I'm more concerned with getting it done right than, for this season. What I would like to do is make sure that, you know, maybe we utilize our water bill mailing process to send out an informational flyer about, like, we, you know, encourage all residents to get the sidewalks cleared, so that, again, kids can get to school, and I know on my block, there's at least three or four senior couples who are walking around the block every morning when I'm leaving for work, and I think it probably, you know, messes up the daily routine, your exercise routine, if we have impassable sidewalks and, you know, a third of our driveways, so. That's the route I'd like to go, and I appreciate you bringing this back, because I know that, I know we asked for something to come back.
Right.
But I think we need to continue to finesse it. I don't want to charge forward with something that, you know, I'm not 100% confident in, and that we haven't, you know, really vetted as far as getting a sense of where the community is at on it. I feel like every time we raise this, people have very, very intense views, whether they're like, yes, everyone should be shoveling their sidewalks, or, you know, this is really heavy-handed, big government, and, you know, we're creating more problems than we're solving. And, you know, I'd like to continue working towards something that, you know, we're all confident is going to improve the situation as opposed to create more problems to be solved.
Commissioner Donigan?
Yes, thank you. I just wrote down some random stuff here. Again, we talked about this, I think, I think it was Commissioner Harrison, they used to bring it up all the time back in a previous life, and so we haven't gotten much farther than that, but I'm in the camp of also keep working on it. I won't be here, but I can watch you keep working on it and listen to you. And I recall that the conversation was really, we all were mostly concerned about main routes, where people were trying to get to school, they were waiting for a bus, so those kinds of things. I don't know if we've ever had a report, like, do we even know how much is not mowed, or smowed? or smowed, shoveled? Is it, you know, is most of the city cleared within five hours or 10 hours or is it, is it really a problem? So, I don't know if it's a problem, how big of a problem it is. I also worry that we don't have staff to go out and be shoveling random lots here and there. I don't know if that's 500 lots or 1,000 lots or how many blocks are going to actually have to plow and if we have the staff to do that. I know on my street, and I just live on a little tiny part of Poplar, is we have people who have snow blowers and they'll blow five lots and then the one person won't be home, so then there'll be a 50 feet of cover, snow cover, which could be actually mine, and then another that people will blow the rest of the street. So, I just don't think they're going to send somebody out to my street to shovel the neighbor's walk because there's probably better, better priority, or bigger priorities like on Crooks or Main Street. But I wondered also how this compared to like the grass cutting ordinance just came up in my mind, like, we have an ordinance that says you have to keep your grass cut and if you don't cut your grass, we'll come and do it for you and charge you for it? And what kind of fine that is? I mean, how does that work? You know?
I don't think.
An infraction?
Well, I don't think the code enforcement staff actually tickets in those cases. I think it's a situation, they just make arrangements through the DPS. DPS comes out and cuts the tall grass on overtime.
At some point.
And then the property owner is billed for it.
It magically appears.
So, the fine is the cost of getting the grass cut.
It's the cost, and here it says $75.
Fee on top of that, so a good grass cutter will run you $150 to $200 bucks.
And you send them a bill for that or just?
We send them an invoice for that. Yes, ma'am.
If it's not paid, it gets rolled over onto the taxes.
But that wouldn't be the same for the snow removal. That would be an actual ticket that you have to pay.
It would be both, right?
Or it could be.
Or it could be both.
Or it could be both, yeah. Do you, I mean, could you have people go out with their snow blowers?
No, ma'am, we would be contracting with a company to do this. They would, we would issue a list of addresses for a landscape company or snow removal company to tackle these based on whatever timeframe's established.
I also know a lot of neighborhoods, or several neighborhoods, contract themselves with snow removal companies to have their sidewalks done, which is actually pretty cheap. I think we did it one year and it was maybe $20 for the whole season and they just came and did our whole sidewalks. So, I don't know if there's any cities anywhere that do this, sort of as a city, offer this? People want to pay $20 a year? They can?
I'm not aware of a city contracting and collecting an additional fee for those who want to opt in to a snow removal program.
I'd pay $20 for that in a heartbeat. I'd probably pay $30 for that or more even. I guess those are my questions or comments for the moment.
Thank you, Commissioner Donigan. Commissioner Polton?
Yes, thank you. The city's been around for decades and I don't think there's been an ordinance such as this past, so I think we just need to improve and enhance our public education so when we put on the TV or the radio, you know, there's going to be a snow emergency, get your cars off the street and also say, clear your sidewalks. My sidewalks around my neighborhood are cleared. The only issues I see are at the end of my street on Woodward where they, these plows come through and they build these big mountains, so I can't see when I need to leave until getting onto a Main Street. So, I think we, I think former city attorney said there was going to be enhanced ticket writing for impeding traffic. I'm not sure where that's at, but maybe we can, a reminder for the police and that this is an option available to them and just, you know, public awareness, I think that's helped out in many things we've had in the city without having to pass an ordinance. So, in addition, by imposing a duty on people as well as maybe requiring the city to come out, Dave, do we expose the city to potential liability?
No, no. I mean, there, that used to be the case and years prior, if you went back, you probably would find either memos from me or statements from a former city manager saying that the city attorney was opposed to anything like this, but the law has changed now and the courts have recognized that governmental immunity generally still applies, that the accumulation of snow does not have to do with whether or not the sidewalk itself is reasonably safe or unsafe for public travel. So, no, there is no problem in terms of liability for the city.
Thank you.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, I want to follow up on something Commissioner Dubbuck said, and that is the, to ask Mr. Gillum if it would be possible for us to customize this ordinance by zoning so that the requirements would be imposed only in commercially zoned, on commercially zoned strips and streets and not on residentially zoned sidewalks.
Maybe potentially based upon the amount of traffic. I don't know if I'd be comfortable drawing a distinction, just commercial versus residential, but, I mean, that's something we could look into, though.
I mean, because, I mean, we want this to help our people and I don't, and I think our residential neighborhoods, I mean, I think people get along, somebody helps somebody else, but I live close enough to, you know, Main Street and I walk to the grocery store and I walk to the hardware and the drugstore, and commercial businesses simply do not shovel their sidewalks. And, I mean, if we're going to create this ordinance, we should do it for the convenience of the people who live here, who want to shop and who want to go to those businesses. And so, I mean, I'm very keen on, on having this, you know, having business neighborhoods or business strips be cleared of snow, and they have the, you know, they can afford it.
Yeah, I mean, like the CBD, I mean, we already have contractors, city contractors that come through and do the work in the CBD in the wintertime, but to expand it to other areas outside the CBD, you know, that's something we could look into, yeah.
I mean, it could be corridors. I mean, if we did, you know, the mile roads in Crooks, Main and Rochester, I mean, that might be a place to start.
I think in some of the research that was done previously by the staff, I think they had potentially identified areas that would be priority zones if the combined clearance model was going to go forward, so that might be a basis to do what you're talking about. So, and I think it was primarily the mile roads and some of the north Maine, south arteries and then Woodward Avenue.
Mm-hmm. So, that would be, I mean, and I think we can do it. I don't think we have to go to the combined clearance model to do that. It seems like we could go with this structure or this model that you've suggested, but just combine it to, you know, non-residential zoning or corridors or something.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if, well, if, yeah, I mean, if you did it based upon zoning, you're always going to have the exceptions. You're going to have the residential properties that are in commercial districts and vice versa.
Oh, true.
But if you did it by corridors, then it would just be a question of defining the corridors, so.
So, that would be a direction, I don't know, but anybody else, that's the direction I'd like to see.
I think I'll just add a few comments here. I mean, we got well over 25, 28,000 dwellings in the city of Royal Oak. You know, I'm sure if we pass an ordinance like this, I'm not sure that everything is going to improve or that we'd have the capability to make so many enforcements that, you know, all of the sidewalks become clear in a reasonable period of time. We see this with the snow emergency ordinance. People get ticketed and we can't issue enough tickets, you know, when people park in the street, making it very difficult for us to plow the streets. I'm not sure that the tickets, if they're not going to change the behavior when somebody literally gets plowed in or, and gets a ticket on their car, I always question whether or not, you know, $100 fine or whatever it may be will get a meaningful difference in what we're trying to achieve, which is clear sidewalks. I think, you know, for the most part, when people, if you break it down, why they're not clearing their sidewalk in front of their house, it really comes down to either they're unaware, they just are oblivious to, you know, what it means to clear the sidewalk and why it's important to do it. They refuse to do it, they're just not being a team player in the community, or they simply can't. They may have an affordability issue, a disability, something of that nature. I think with some of those latter ones, you know, the disability issues, senior issues, we do have the Roses program, you know, so I think making people aware that you can get your driveway and your sidewalk cleared is a possibility if you have financial issues, you have access issues. I also like ideas, you know, we did the tree root insurance option where people could opt in and buy this insurance. I think this goes to really what Commissioner Donigan was saying. I'd really like to explore to see if we could figure out and like bid and, you know, get a certain set price with contractors. I don't know to what legal ability we have it, but if for whatever reason you're out of town, you can't do something, you want someone to come by and you want to chip in and pay 20 bucks while there's three or four preferred contractors out there that, you know, the city has negotiated with to get the best possible rates. I know there's limitations on what we can do with that, you know, but to me, I'd like to look at that. And then the PR, again, for the people that are unaware, I mean, there are folks, including me, when, in my younger years, you may not just be aware of how important sidewalks are. You get wrapped up in your own life, you get a rental house with, you know, five young people living in it and not one of them takes ownership of the house or the property and, you know, it ends up, you know, nobody does it. So, I think at the end, you know, we also, I like the idea of certain corridors. I can tell you, it really touched my heart. My wife and I were, it was after a winter storm and we were driving down, we turned left on 11 Mile out of Alexander, heading west, and this man in a mobile wheelchair, electronic wheelchair, was forced to go into the middle of 11 Mile Road in order to get around, you know, the snow and couldn't even get up the easements or anything like that, the ramps. And, you know, I felt bad, he was waving me by, but, you know, I was trying to keep a safe distance, but, you know, I just didn't know what to do. I'm like, this man's going to get hit and he's in an area that's highly trafficked and there's no reason why this human being should be denied the access to the sidewalk to carry on his business during the day, and it really touched me. So, there are issues out there. We do have, now, now, and there are also limitations. So, you know, areas that are near public transit, areas that are major thoroughfares where people do walk all the time, I think need to be a priority. I think we can piecemeal this. I don't think this type of ordinance where we're charging the average Joe, you know, $100, I think it's going to, it's going to beg more problems than it's going to solve. But, we do have a problem because I've seen it firsthand on major corridors with people not having adequate clearance to do what they need to do. I think it's unfair and we need to take, make those areas a priority and then go from there, but that's my opinion. So, Mr. Marley?
I'm going to be brief and I have too much to add, but I'll say I'm in favor of a, I'm in favor of this ordinance if we extended the timeframe. I would, I would be completely in favor of this ordinance as drafted. You know, it was October of 2015. I just pulled up an article by the inimitable, ah, inimitable Mike McConnell. That says, "City Commissioners Jeremy Marley and Dave Polton are among those suggesting Royal Oak conduct an information campaign to encourage residents and businesses to be good neighbors and clear snow from sidewalks if the city does not enact an ordinance." So, I feel like we've tried that, not to say we shouldn't do that again, and we should certainly put info and insight and into the water bills, absolutely, but, you know, other cities have these ordinances all across the country, all across Michigan, all across Canada, and they find a way to make them work, and I don't see why we, as a city, a city that wants to be pedestrian-friendly, a city that wants to be for people, that wants to be, have people able to get around, can't figure this out. It's not brain surgery, it's not rocket science. We need some, but sometimes we need a little tool, a little enforcement mechanism to get people to remove snow from their sidewalks so that the gentleman you just cited can get around our city. We maybe, I don't know how we would do this, but, you know, the, I know that Smart is supposed to clear their bus stops, and if they're not doing that, then that's something else we need to look at doing. But whatever we can do to make it easier for people to get around the city 365 days a year, we should be doing.
Any other discussion? No discussion? No action? Mr. Gillum, do you comprehend the feedback that was provided by the commission here for you to go back and make some adjustments, or do you need any official action out of this body, or do you feel comfortable processing what you heard?
I've got a sense for the direction the commission thinks they would want to go. I think I can work with Mr. Chris and the staff and we can bring something back for your consideration at a later date, so.
All right. Thank you. All right, that brings us to item number 11, Paradiso versus the City of Royal Oak. Mr. Gillum?
Mayor Fournier and city commissioners, a brief item. I appreciate this being added to the agenda tonight. This is a sidewalk trip and fall case that is pending in the Oakland County Circuit Court. We discussed certain options that the city has in closed session with outside counsel tonight. Based upon those discussions, I would just ask the commission to adopt a resolution authorizing counsel to proceed in the manner that was discussed in closed session tonight.
Okay, we have a recommendation by city attorney Dave Gillum.
I move?
We have a motion by Commissioner Dubbuck, supported by Commissioner Donigan. Any support, or I'm sorry, any discussion? Okay, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to the end of our regular agenda. If there's nothing more for the betterment of the people of Royal Oak, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor Fournier, I was just going to, for the record, the in-seasons came before the city commission, the first time on October 15th, 2001, I thought it was later than that, 2001, and I made the motion to approve the liquor license and Commissioner Harrison supported it, but it didn't pass.
Thank you for that.
Yes, I'm looking forward to them getting the ability to serve beer and wine.
So, Mr. Marley?
Mayor, I do hereby declare the people's business completed for this evening and I move that we adjourn.
You have a motion by Commissioner Marley. Is there support for that motion? Commissioner Douglas supports. Any discussion on this wonderful motion?
Well put, Commissioner.
All right, with none. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion passes. We are adjourned.